Be on that spot, can you?
Yes, I can. I was there and Karen was running and our friends and I stood pretty close to that spot and I have to tell you, it was a little nerve wracking, honestly. But, you know, I was there.
We spoke of just two lives you saved. More than 280 were injured. Do you think about that? You know, there are people alive.
I do. I mean, it's phenomenal. I don't believe a single person who left that scene and went to a hospital lost their life. So, that's the excellence of medical care that is Boston.
Yeah. Dr. Ron Medson, emergency doctor at Boston Medical Center. Ron, thanks so much.
Oh, you're welcome, Ron.
And you're listening to Here and Now.
Next time on The World, Ahmed Mahmoud's Yemeni restaurant usually has a lunchtime crowd, but during Ramadan, daytime is for fasting. Around sundown, though, his place gets busy. Usually, there's table service.
But for Ramadan, we decided to do a buffet.
With favorite dishes that Yemenis grew up with, that newcomers can enjoy for the first time.
Food is the one language that everybody understands.
That story on The World. Catch up with what's going on in the world, Monday through Thursdays at 3:00 PM on Radio IQ. Radio IQ gets support in part from Garth Newell Music Center, presenting live and live streaming concerts throughout the year. Program details at garthnewell.org. And from contributions from listeners like you. Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and your NPR station. And from MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and simulating software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And the Music Emporium, guitar sellers for more than 50 years, celebrating the enduring presence of music made on the front porch and center stage. You can learn more at themusicemporium.com.
It's Here and Now. More than 800,000 state and local government jobs around the country are vacant. In North Carolina, state agencies are facing a major worker shortage. So, they want the legislature to increase salaries this year so they can better recruit and retain employees. Colin Campbell of member station WUNC has this report.
At a State Department of Agriculture lab in Raleigh, Dr. James Tribas oversees testing on dead farm and other animals to check for illnesses and diseases. Machines here process slides for pathologists to review. But while the lab usually has three pathologists to run these tests, right now it only has one. The lab overall has an 18% vacancy rate. And one of the agency's satellite labs in the town of Elkin has had to shut down entirely due to the shortage.
We've lost both of our veterinarians in that role, so we had to shut down necropsy services in that area. It's a poultry-dense area. We're concerned, always concerned about infectious diseases in the poultry industry, particularly avian influenza.
Tribas worries that can make it harder to catch the next outbreak of avian influenza. He'd like to fill the openings, but low salaries mean he's gotten few qualified applicants. It's the same story down the hall where Daniel Gaines leads the agency's food safety inspection program. He's losing inspectors to higher-paying jobs with the Federal Drug Administration.
We do the same work that FDA does, but we don't get the same pay, or at least not even close to the same pay. It's a real wide gap.
In a presentation to legislators, Agriculture Commissioner Steve Troxler said he asked for funding in last year's state budget to increase salaries for jobs where the same workers could earn more money elsewhere.
I think we got a million dollars last year in salary adjustment, and I think I had asked for eight. And I'm going to be frank with you, my first thought was, we got just enough money to piss off everybody. And that's exactly what happened.
Airline pilots working for the department got a raise, but their coworkers were left out.
It made the mechanics ill that they didn't get a pay increase. So, my number-one mechanic and number-two mechanic walked out the front door of the hangar, went down three hangars, and took a job. The first one got $40,000 a year more, the second thirty.
Troxler asked legislators again this year to fund at least $8 million in salary increases. Across North Carolina, state government agencies, nearly a quarter of jobs are currently vacant. That's up from about 12% before the pandemic. Lawmakers from both parties recognize it's a problem they'll need to address in this year's budget. But the question is how much the state can afford to spend. Democratic Governor Roy Cooper's budget calls for giving all state workers a 5% raise this year, along with a bonus of at least $1,000. His plan also includes an additional $250 million to adjust salaries for jobs where the current pay doesn't match the labor market. Altogether, Cooper wants to spend more than $2 billion raising employee pay. Senate Leader Phil Berger, a Republican, says the governor's proposal is more than the state can afford.
What I would say is, it's probably not realistic, given the reality of the dollars that are available, the need to keep spending within certain confines. I just don't know that it's a realistic proposal.
The State Employees Association of North Carolina advocates for state employees. Artist Watkins is the executive director, and she says Cooper's proposal isn't enough to solve the problem.
Well, first of all, that doesn't even keep up with inflation. So, if it was a normal year, it wouldn't be a raise that's going to be competitive with other employers. But certainly with everything we're experiencing, with a 23% vacancy rate, you've already got employees doing the work of several people, almost everywhere.
Watkins says state workers used to be willing to earn less because they received government benefits. But those are less generous now because new employees won't receive state health insurance after they retire. While the vacancy rates are highest in the state's prisons and in the Department of Health and Human Services, the Division of Motor Vehicles might be the place most people notice the worker shortage. Visiting the DMV these days can require standing in line for hours or making an appointment three months in advance. Tanika Williams supervises a driver's license office in Raleigh. She says she's constantly short-staffed because workers are finding higher pay elsewhere.
I have 14 stations. And right now, today, I have one, two, three, four, five of us, but I have 14 stations.
That means Williams and her team often have to skip lunches or work past 5:00 PM to keep things moving.
I do almost four jobs. I'm the supervisor. I do road tests. I service almost 50 people, literally daily, and I handle the front, and I do all of that.
The DMV recently raised starting salaries for driver's license examiners to about $40,000. But Commissioner Wayne Goodwin says that number needs to be closer to $50,000 to attract people.
Incentive for folks to join us is making sure that the salaries reflect what the labor market indicates is an appropriate salary. You know, for many of these positions, they're presently, folks are having to work second jobs, or they're working full-time in restaurants and earning more doing that job than being a driver's license examiner.
He says full staffing is key to reducing wait times.
You know, if we were fully staffed across the state, every day, we'd be able to reach hundreds more customers. Certainly, if you multiply that every month, we're losing out on thousands and thousands of customer interactions that we cannot do otherwise.
Back at the Department of Agriculture, 25% of the staff is eligible for retirement within the next five years, so the staff shortage is only going to get worse. State legislators are working on their new budget, which will likely be finalized this summer. For Here and Now, I'm Colin Campbell.
And Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Vipar Fernandezin, Alameda, California.
I'm Robin Young in Boston. This is Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from WBUR.
The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council for April the 17th, 2003, is hereby called to order. And I'll ask our Clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Mr. Pretty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Volason.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here, and the Quorum is present. Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So, you can watch it all day on Saturday, if you miss something. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. And again, we welcome everybody, and I am delighted and honored to recognize Reverend Susan E. Bentley, Rector of the St. James Episcopal Church. She will be delivering our invocation today. And following that invocation, I'll lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for one.
Let us pray. Almighty God, send down upon those who hold office in the city of Roanoke and on the city council, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. We ask this in your holy and life-giving name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice where all.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Rector, for leading us in that invocation today. And let me welcome everybody to our session today. Starts at 2:00, and we'll be going. This is going to be a pretty long day for us. We've got a few things to do to finish up on. But first, the announcements. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. And let me just say, this council welcomes all of our citizens who want to serve on the various boards and commissions that we have. It's imperative that you become a part of that, and so we welcome that opportunity for you to serve. And all you have to do is just access the city's website at www.roanokeva.gov to complete an online application. And if everything else fails, you call the clerk's office, and they will get you that application. But it's an easy process, so don't let that deter you. Please come down, or call, or you can do it online. But we want you to come forward and serve on these committees that we have. And we appreciate your willingness to do so. Today at 4:30, Roanoke City Council will conduct two interviews to select two trustees to serve on Roanoke City School Board for three-year terms of office each, commencing July 1, 2023. On April 3, council conducted three interviews, and we will conclude the interviews today. Tonight, we will be interviewing Elizabeth C.S. Jamison and Natasha Ann Saunders. And so, and after that, a public hearing will be held at 7:00 PM. Or soon thereafter, the matter may be heard to receive citizens' comments on the candidates to serve as Roanoke School Board trustees. So, that's an important matter that we'll have, and we'll be interviewing the final two applicants this afternoon, sometime around 4:30. All right. Presentations and acknowledgements. I want to recognize someone that has been very, that's very important, has been very important, and is very important with us and for me here on city council. And I just want him to stand, and if he can't come up, Steve Martin, Steve, where are you? Come on down here. Steve Martin, who is retired, but our Director, Steve of Social Services. And if there's any one place that we reach out and ask for help, it's that. And Steve, I want to thank you. You officially, I think you officially retired in April.
Yes, at the end of April. Thank you.
Thank you, man, for all that you've done. I understand you had a little mishap here a while back. I'm glad to see you standing.
That's right.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
I just want the city to recognize you for all the good you've done. And I know I've called down with some tough cases, but I appreciate your commitment, your dedication, and your work with citizens that come before you, doing the best that you can. So, I want this council to, most I'm sure know you, but to recognize you and our citizens for all the good work you've done. So, with that, I want to give you an opportunity to say some things before this council.
Well, thank you so much, and it's an honor to be standing before you here today, and even greater honor for having served in the city for about 22 and 1/2 years now. With the last year, the last six years or so, being in a position of Director, I've had such a privilege of working under great leadership and having such dedicated, compassionate staff to work for, work with, that are serving our citizens. And it's just, it's been a pleasure to serve, and I, I'm grateful that my mishap a couple of weeks ago wasn't much worse. And, but doing much better now, and it is good to be able to stand before you. And thank you for acknowledging us here today. Thank you.
I'd like to ask our council to have any comments or thoughts they'd like to share with you. Vice Mayor.
Steve, thank you. And we are really glad that you're healing.
Thank you.
And that you're here. I want to commend you. I know these years have been extremely challenging. I know that we are seeing some of the highest number of foster care cases that we have in our history. But we're also one of the highest, if not the top, city in Virginia for adoptions.
That's correct.
And I think that's just a microcosm of the work that you all do. So, I just want to express my gratitude to you and your entire staff for your extraordinary work on behalf of our children and youth and our families in the community.
Thank you very much.
And enjoy your retirement.
Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say this, pretty much the same thing Vice Mayor said. Steve, congratulations on your retirement. And also, I do have to thank not just you, but also your staff that you've worked with all these years, for all the hard work that you guys have put in. It's really been challenging, and I know, you know, we still have a little bit of ways to go, but we are getting there, and we appreciate your patience. And thank you to you and your staff, and I hope you enjoy your retirement. And don't come back. Now, I heard you might consider it, but don't come back. Enjoy your retirement.
That's right. Thank you.
All right. Venus Sanchez Jones.
Mr. Martin, I just want to say the same thing. I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. You have always been able to be there for whenever we needed something in the community with questions, and you always find the answer. So, thank you very much, and pass that on to your staff as well.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right. I want to ask everybody to stand with me, and let's give Steve a hand clap on his shoulder. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Mayor.
Let me also recognize Assistant City Attorney David Collins, who's here today to make sure we go by policy, the code, and the rules, and anything else you want to call it. David, good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. We're now down to the hearing of citizens upon public matters. Madam Clerk, do we have any citizens that'll sign up?
Yes, we have about six citizens.
Okay. If you would call them in the order that they signed up, I would appreciate that.
Yes. Our first speaker, I'll announce the first two speakers. The first speaker is Anthony Ferguson, followed by Frida Cathcart. And you have three minutes each.
Welcome, Mr. Ferguson.
Thanks for the opportunity to talk here today. And just start by saying that we love living here in Roanoke. Our family does. And this is where we raise our family and own a business. The business is called Ferguson Fitness. We're located at Rivers Edge South. And so, we're talking a little bit today, I think there's a topic about extra parking down there. So, I thought I could share a few insights from owning a, you know, our studio there on location and how it could help everybody. There is very limited parking, particularly with all the athletic events that occur at Rivers Edge South. And, you know, as far as flow of business, it does impact me sometimes and some of our members. But more importantly, I think it's the safety side that I would worry about more than just the inconvenience, meaning that there are a lot of cars coming and going, and triple parking, and double parking, and a lot of these instances. So, with our members and other people frequenting the fields and the area, I worry about the safety of them. And also, from a fitness standpoint, one thing that we find is anytime there's a barricade or something that people feel like prevents them from getting to be active or exercise, that's just one more reason why they may put off a healthy lifestyle. So, if they find themselves, you know, they head down to Rivers Edge South, and they want to get down there and exercise, or get their family out, and there's just this parking kind of, sometimes it really is, I know there's different pictures and reports and things, but it can be completely inaccessible. And, you know, I think that our goal is always to get more people moving and to change lives with fitness. And anytime there's any sort of a challenge to getting people moving, they sometimes do not adopt those healthy activities and, you know, and it can totally, you know, take someone out of the mission of helping people get active from the whole community. So, anyway, we love the area down there. It's beautiful, and we want to, you know, we take great pride in trying to keep it clean and look nice. We are, long-term, you know, we're going to be there for several years, so it's something very important to us. But we, on the same side, we think the Parks and Rec, and we love those guys. They do an amazing job. So, I think that a little bit more parking would help not only our mission, but the whole city to help people get more active and healthy. So, that's my main. I don't know if there's any questions or stuff. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. And let me note, Mr. Ferguson, for everyone, that we set this time aside as a priority for citizens to be heard. And all matters will be referred to the city manager for a response, recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. So, we don't ask many questions, but that's what we're doing. We're referring those to the city manager. Thank you. All right, Ms. Cathcart, good to see you.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity here fulfilling my role as the District Director of the Soil and Water Conservation Board, making you all aware that this Saturday is Earth Day. Yay. And we have at least two celebrations happening locally. One is going to be in the Grandin Village from 11:00 to 3:00, where there'll be festivities and activities and exhibitions. And then, from 10:00 to 1:00, in northwest Roanoke, people will be gathering at the Cafe at 1707 Cove Road Northwest, where they're going to be doing a cleanup. So, wear your work clothes when you go there. I wanted to make you aware of the Earth Day's history. It's 53 years old. It started back in 1970 in response to rivers catching on fire, and a lot of pollution in the air, and a lot of concerns about the environment. Two years after that, in 1972, the Clean Water Act passed. And then, the year after that, the Endangered Species Act passed. Now, the Endangered Species Act is a really important thing for Roanoker's to be aware of, as well as our local government and agencies, because we have an endangered species, the Roanoke log perch, that the Quanis Club actually put up a plaque along the Greenway in southeast Roanoke to educate the public about. The Endangered Species Act doesn't just protect the fish, but it protects their habitats as well. And Roanoke City has 11 streams that are impaired out of the 13 that we have. So, it's really important for us to be mindful when it comes to citizens' activities, development businesses, that we know how important it is to protect our water, because it goes hand in hand with our endangered species. Back in the fall of 2021, Roanoke City called for emergency action on global warming. And we're still waiting for the update of the Climate Action Plan. But while we wait for that, the 2040 Vision Plan that you all passed has a lot of great guidance in it. It talks about, "Roanoke City will boast a clean, resilient environment in which everyone will live and prosper in harmony with nature through innovative, sustainable, and resilient practices that nurture community health, embrace recreational opportunities, protect our natural resources, address the local aspects of climate change, support ecosystem services, and foster appreciation and understanding of the city's relationship with its natural surroundings." And that's under a whole section in the plan called Harmony with Nature that goes on for dozens of pages. So, I really recommend people looking at that, of course, you all, but beyond that, for citizens to be aware of that document and guidance that's in there. It also talks about being careful with land use and to make sure that we are always in harmony with nature. So, I appreciate this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers, first John Luger, then Paul Kelly.
Welcome, John.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Let me give you just a moment. These, the handouts are very appropriate to what we'll discuss. Don't want to start the three minutes too quickly. There should be a map as well with that little rendering. Is everyone good? Okay, great. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak before you today. First of all, I wanted to say a sincere thank you for buying the Ramada. Our business is across the street at Varsity Park, and I can't tell you how many people have told us that's the best thing that's happened in the last five or 10 years. So, thank you as a council. My name is John Luger. I'm a Roanoke City resident. I'm also a business owner. Live in Roanoke City with my wife and two boys. Own and operate Virginia Varsity Transfer and Storage in Varsity Park. boys. Own and operate Virginia Varsity Transfer and Storage in Varsity Park down on Edinburgh Street. My kids play tennis on the courts there, on the fields. Coworkers and I use the fields. We work out there, run, play tennis, run races, take in fireworks. We just found a picture last night when I was about nine years old playing soccer on the same fields. Our business bought the Graves Humphreys in 2019. Needed a lot of cleaning up. We went to work. We had a great team. We got it really cleaned up and dressed up quite a bit. We built a new multi-use storage facility in the back that has lifestyle uses and different things. It serves nonprofits and a number of different users. The old Graves Humphreys building is now Varsity Park, the Business Center. We have some great businesses there, and we continue to lease the space. So we are getting some great folks in there. We do have capacity still. There is a concern that parking is becoming limited. And as Mr. Ferguson said, there's a concern that you can see on many, many nights. There are pictures in there of different parking situations. But the businesses that are at Varsity Park, including ours, have invested a total of about $14 million over the last few years. We alone pay real estate taxes of over $115,000 per year, and it was a fraction of that when we got there. And we're proud to do so. We just ask respectfully that you consider adding some additional parking at the first part of Edinburgh Street. The parking is a major issue, both for economic development, but more importantly, life safety. You have a lot of families and kids that are showing up for ballgames, and they're stressed trying to park. And so that's something that is really, really key. We're worried someone's going to get, have an accident at some point. The second page we have in your packet there has all the different user types, which are many and diverse. The third page has an arrow map showing Edinburgh Street, and how it funnels people to the parks. And people just funnel in there regardless of how much capacity there is, and end up backing out since it's a non-cul-de-sac. But that's a small, narrow space to take care of the tennis teams, to take care of all the fitness users, and people just walk in their dogs. The next three pages are various pictures of the street just being absolutely loaded in an unsafe fashion. There's one at night. Nighttime's especially concerning, especially if it's raining. That gets a little tricky. And finally, the last page, we submitted a letter to Mr. Cal respectfully requesting consideration here in the attachment. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, John. Let me just say that Councilwoman Moon and I were right over there Saturday, because we met with all of the youth baseball teams and the youth softball teams, and we were charged with throwing out the first pitch. And I'll admit, council, one Moon did a little better than I did. But we enjoyed that. But I know about the parking. I got there and then had a lacrosse tournament at the same time. And so it was, and I drove by. I didn't stop there, but man, that space up there, I think that Varsity Building is...
Yes, sir. Varsity Park Business Center in the back's our storage building.
I tell you, it looked good, and I couldn't find a parking space anywhere. And I saw those spaces over there, but I bided by the rules. I turned around and went back, and somehow I got in there. But I understand that, when you have all those groups over there, and parents come out to follow their children, parking can be...
It's kind of dangerous. So thank you for your consideration. We feel there's a good solution there to add 18 spots right on the other side of Edinburgh Street. People are parking there illegally now, just about every night when it's busy. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Ms. Moon, did you have something?
Yes, I did.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
No, it's mainly for the manager. I see your letter that you referenced here is dated November.
Yes, ma'am.
November 4, 2022. And that's when you asked the city to approve, fund, and construct a parking expansion. And you also mentioned another option of adding 18 spaces. I just want to ask the manager, between then and now, has anyone followed up with this gentleman, to discuss the matter?
Yes, we have.
And to offer an option as to what we can do?
Yeah, the option of putting the 18 parking spaces that are identified costs, our estimate was $250,000 at the time, so that turned out to be $14,000 per space.
Right.
And all of the cars you see in the image are actually parked illegally.
Right.
So part of what we discussed was enforcement, and I think one of the conversations that we had with the businesses there is they really didn't want to move in, us to move into enforcement, because, again, people are there to enjoy the park and so on. So, and that was the extent of the conversations that we had had at that point. There is, part of the challenge you see with that street where it goes and it just ends, it's a very short street.
Yes.
There's not actually a lot of opportunity to put, there is room to put as many as 18 parking spaces there. Don't know whether that would actually alleviate the issue.
Probably.
It would probably help the issue. And then the question is, is that, are those dollars, is that the best place to spend those dollars for that? Or do we need to look at some other kind of enforcement action that would enforce the no parking? The reason it's signed for no parking is for what we're experiencing. It's not safe to park that many cars in that location. But those conversations, I've had those conversations with parks, with economic development, and I think they've had those conversations with John and some of the other folks as well with it. And I'm not saying that that took care of the problem. The problem still exists.
Yeah, I wanted to add to that. I recall, again, being here as long as I have and having raised children and grandchildren, parking over there. I know exactly where you're talking about. My kids played rec.
Yes, sir.
Ball, and we were participants in parking there under the Graves Humphreys. And they used to even have paved parking at one time, trying to work with it. But I have, the other question is, we used to also be able to park over there with the Victory Stadium side. Are they able to park on that side anymore?
There's parking on multiple streets in that area. I think this is a convenient way to get to the fields.
Right, it is, yeah.
That's why, and part of the challenge is with the businesses operating there, obviously, we can't close the street to vehicles. The most we could do in terms of that would be to actually enforce parking, illegal parking in the area, or, and probably would have to do that even if we built additional parking, because, again, there's more cars than you're seeing than 18 spaces would accommodate. But there is still other parking.
Is the parking available? I cannot recall, even though the mayor and I was just there Saturday, of where the former Ramada Inn, we used to park there too.
No.
Is that open? Is it just blocked all the way off and no parking?
Yeah. And that was, that's in parts so that they don't drive into that area. And it would really not be safe to have parking in that location because of crossing Franklin over in that area. But, and I will say, even with the parking that's available on the other streets, when you have events like what took place this weekend, there simply is not enough parking in that area to accommodate all the users at the facility. Even if there was additional parking here, there would not be, it'd be better, but would not solve the issue.
So what do we, what do we do far, as the business go in trying to help?
We either have to start then limiting use of the facilities. That would be another option we have is we would actually limit the use of the fields to be able to actually accommodate the parking. The other options would be to try to find other areas for parking to be accommodated. You know, historically, we might have looked at, for example, some of Carillion's garages. I don't know if those spaces actually are, we do that for our Fourth of July fireworks celebration, but that's really with their assistance, because those are private garages. So, yeah, I mean, it really is a, there are more people that use, it's a good thing, there are more people that use that field than we have the ability to accommodate parking. So we either have to enforce the illegal parking, limit the use of the field, and/or construct additional parking in the area, beyond even probably...
Well, two options seem like they are not there. Enforcement is sounding more and more like the option that's more reasonable to be a better partner with Varsity and all to accommodate.
If I may, I spoke to Luke Pugh yesterday, city engineer, and with the cost increase with inflation, he put it about $227. So it's a little bit better yesterday. And he said I could quote him. Using the Ramada at some point for parking, I know it's restricted with FEMA funds, that seems like a very logical way. We've talked to engineers about it. Maybe you could route people, the pedestrians, to go down onto the Greenway and come under the bridge or not crossing traffic. But there are ways to do it, and that really is a much better, big, big solution. We're just thinking this might be a good, you know, take some of the pressure off of the pot there. So...
Exactly. Because we used to cross Franklin Road and go to the fields too, so...
Like Frogger.
You know, you do.
Exactly. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wilson, Councilman Wilson.
This is kind of going back to that question about Carillion and whether or not we could possibly create a partnership with them. I know they're building that new garage on the corner of McClanahan, which is walkable over to the parks as well. So I think it'd be great if we could engage with them instead of having to build more parking structures down in that area.
We certainly can speak with them. I know they have expressed concerns, once the cancer facility is up and running, and as well the work that's going on now, they have actually expressed concerns whether they have ample parking, even with the facilities that they're building. But we can have that discussion with them as well. It would be safer to be able to use those facilities, probably, than having folks cross Franklin and others in the area.
Yeah, even if that's a short-term solution while we try to figure out something longer term.
Great.
All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here this afternoon. My name is Paul Kelly, and for the past 10 springs, I've been coaching the Patrick Henry Girls High School tennis team. And we are one of the few high schools in the state of Virginia that do not have on-campus tennis courts. So we have always used Rivers Edge South as our, not only as our practice courts, but also as host for our home matches. Over the years, over those 10 years, I've seen the transformation of that area from what Mr. Luger has done with Varsity Park and the wonderful side of that, to seeing the Ramada Inn go away, and some of the issues that that brought from a safety standpoint when we had kids at matches. Interestingly, this year, we have 18 kids on our tennis team, 18 girls. And that's a big jump from what we've had in the past. So when we have everyone, if every parent were to show up for a match, guess what? 18 spots would be really, really good to have. I know it's an expense. We've talked about trying to raise money to have courts on our campus, and it is a huge amount of money. And I respect that. And I think it would be better for us to utilize the courts at Rivers Edge rather than spend the money to have campus courts. I'd rather see that money go to the school board and the teachers, because it's a lot of money for four or five months that they're getting used. That being said, my greatest fear is kids traveling from Patrick Henry to those courts every day, whether it's young drivers, or whether it's their parents bringing them. But it's especially the inexperienced drivers that scare me to death that they're going to get hurt. When they're in that parking lot and everyone's running around, it does get a little bit sketchy. And it would be really, really nice to have those parking spaces available. Thank you.
Just one question. Have you talked to the school board on this?
No, have not. I've gone up to the athletic director over the years. But the safety issue is definitely something of a great concern of mine. I just, I fear that more than anything. You know, this afternoon, we have tennis practice at 4 o'clock, and those kids are all driving from PH. The traffic through there, something one day is going to happen, and it's scary to me. My kids used to play. They don't anymore, or they do, but not with high school. But it's a scary thing. So having a better parking situation when everyone's, it gets crazy down there. It really does. So I know it's a large expense, but I think it would be really nice to have.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. I was going to suggest that in addition to the conversation that you've asked with Carillion, I will have that conversation with the superintendent as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Our next two speakers, Elizabeth Vale and Barbara Durk.
Good afternoon. It's great to have the opportunity to be here today and speak with you all. I'm Elizabeth Vale. I am the Development Director for the American Heart Association and have hosted the Heart Walk here in Roanoke for 31 years. I'm a Roanoke resident and grew up here as well. In many of those years, we've had our Heart Walk at one of the beautiful parks in downtown Roanoke. And here today as well, I wanted to request additional parking. For the last several years, we've had our Heart Walk at Rivers Edge Park South, which is a beautiful venue with the magnolia trees, and it's a nice size for our group of walkers. However, there is a concern on Edinburgh Street, but we have a potential solution with expanding that parking, as well as allowing parking in the current grassy field where the Ramada Inn was. I think both of those would be great. We do have some folks who are handicapped, as well as folks who are recent heart patients. They've just had surgery. They would love to come to the Heart Walk and celebrate their survivorship. But last year, I had a call from Richfield Retirement Community. They always have a team, and they asked what our parking situation was like. It has been an issue and a growing issue the last few years, as our Heart Walk attendance has continued to grow. And they were not able to join us last year at the Heart Walk because of safety concerns. So I wanted to request the proposal to be considered for the expansion on Edinburgh Street, hopefully with preserving as many of those beautiful trees as possible, and permission to use the grassy field that does have an entrance for folks to park, like they do at Sinklin Farm Pumpkin Festival. They park on the field there. It's no problem at all in any type of weather. So it looks like a really good solution to be able to use that current grassy field. We do have a nice relationship with Carillion. They have been a wonderful partner of ours over the years. It is quite a long walk from that parking garage to our venue, and it would be much more convenient for folks to park on Edinburgh, on Wiley, which they do as well, but in that grassy field in the Ramada. So I'd like to request parking expansion in those particular locations. Thank you for letting me make that request today.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd also suggest that folks, for example, with the temporary parking, like what was just talked about as well, the property, which includes a paved parking lot behind the Ramada, is still owned by Sonny Shaw. And I would suggest that they may also want to reach out to Sonny. There's access back to that, and it's paved, and would potentially offer other opportunities for an event like that. I'm not saying for the regular parking, but for a special event or something.
All right. Thank you. You're welcome, Barbara.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, and city staff. I am Barbara Durkin. And to quote Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. from his "I Have a Dream" speech, "I have a dream that my four children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of the skin, but by the content of their character. I prefer to recognize, identify people by the content of their character, and not the color of their skin, or their gender, or their sexual orientation." Church Women United, and each of you, hold up, each of you got a foot here. Church Women United in Roanoke Valley is facilitating "I Love Thy Neighbor Walk," and it's going to be on the sidewalks in the Loudon-Gilmore-Hurt Park and West End Neighborhood on Saturday, April 29, from 10 to 2. Now, Vice Mayor Cobb came last year and told us a little bit about gun violence committee and the work there. But we are hoping that this walk will take place, Lord willing, and all the paperwork and certificate of insurance gets submitted on time, to allow the ladies to walk in the neighborhood. This is a prayer walk. Walkers will be visiting and starting out at Loudon Avenue Christian, Jerusalem Baptist, West End Methodist, and McCray Court Senior Living. There will be prayer PowerPoints along the route to recognize the transition of the neighborhoods from schools to parks and along the economic development commercial area that needs to be revitalized. The walk takes us on the sidewalk in front of Florine Thornhill's house, and it is up for sale. And some of you are so young, you probably don't know who Florine Thornhill is. And this article is from the Virginia Pilot. Let me read you just a little bit. "Florine Thornhill, when she was 73, had no intention of causing a stir. She just decided to do something small to make her block better. So she marched down to City Hall and asked a suspicious official if she could borrow a lawnmower to clean up one abandoned and overgrown lot. For years, she had walked the neighborhood with blinders to the blight, stepping past the decaying homes, drug deals, and derelicts. And then one Sunday, on her way to church choir, she passed an unconscious woman in the overgrowth of a nearby lot. While Thornhill assumed it was a drug addict, she got involved, and she really made a huge difference." That the Florine Thornhill was a mother of nine, included one child with mental disabilities, and she decided to do what she could. She borrowed that mower. She cleaned up the lot. She got her neighbors to start cleaning up the lot. And city officials noted that her once decrepit neighborhood had begun to shine in Roanoke. In 1980, Thornhill and her Gilmore neighbors joined in a pilot project with three other neighborhoods. She's been recognized by Bill Clinton as a shining light. She's been recognized by other Virginia... She's been recognized by other Virginia cities who have followed lead. And the Roanoke model is being studied across America as government officials try to involve the people they serve. And it goes on about Roanoke was recognized, we had a program, Pass Me Another Brick, on how to build cities, and Roanoke was recognized as a leader then. So, we still need to recognize our neighborhoods and let the neighborhood voices be heard. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council.
Thank you.
And if you can't use the walk, and this isn't all women's walk, pass it on to somebody you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, approval of the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the item. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. And I want to call your attention to a request for a closed meeting from our city manager to discuss the disposition of publicly-owned property located at 339 Salem Avenue Southwest for discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia, 1950 as a amendment. I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Is this just on that one particular item or the whole consent agenda?
It's for the consent agenda. I move the consent agenda.
I'd like to remove item C1 from the consent agenda. Is it C1 regarding the minutes?
I have this X on Y.
Oh, I can speak to it at the appropriate time.
Oh, you want to remove it for separate discussion?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, okay. Then I will follow back up on my motion to amend it, to remove item C1, to recognize moving item C1 for discussion and to have it approved separately.
All right, is there a second on that?
Second to the amended motion.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes. I'll call a roll. Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volsen?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. All right.
Somewhere at C1.
Okay. I'm trying to look for it. Where is my C1? All right. I didn't get that out here. All right. The minutes of the regular meeting, Roanoke City Council held on Monday, February 6, 2023, and Tuesday, February 23rd, 2023.
Motion to approve the minutes. Sir, there'll be discussion, but there has to be a motion and a second first.
Okay, so.
I'm lost.
So, the minutes have been pulled out separately, but in order to discuss them, there should be a motion and a second for them to be on the table?
Yes. Well, that's why you remove them for a separate discussion, so now they can be placed on the table to be discussed.
Yes. So, it'd be prior to...
That's what I'm trying to figure out. Why are you trying to prove them without, we need to discuss? I'm lost with you, Luke. I'm sorry.
Typically, you take a motion and a second, and then you have discussion on the item before you close discussion to then approve them.
I believe Councilman Pretty is requesting that he's not providing consent to have that part of the consent agenda, but simply remove it and have it considered separately.
Right, and that's what we've done. I'm trying to see the way he wants to approve it and move a motion when it's on the table now for discussion. He's trying to put it back on the table and give a second and then discuss it. I'm following him. I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, I won't follow him because I'm not...
But if that's what it takes to get it on the table for you, Luke, I'll make the motion unless you want to move it and I'll second it.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and I'll second it to put it on the table for discussion.
Thank you. Speaking to the motion, Mayor Lee?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm not contesting the content, I'm going to pass these out. The content of the minutes, the minutes as they were drafted do reflect what did occur for the meeting. However, I do have a statement that I want to add on to the record regarding something that I believe that should be in the minutes, but it was an action that did not occur. Seeing as under Robert's rules, you can't put something in the minutes that did not occur. I'm not making an amendment to change the minutes on the 6th, but I thought this would be the appropriate place on the agenda to make a statement as it reflects the minutes so that when the minutes are prepared for April 17th, this item can be included in there. And this just speaks to, when we reconvened at 5:09 PM that day, I believe that, at least I, if, based on my judgment, should have indicated prior to the vote that there was a departure from our closed-meeting requirements based on the discussion that was had in the closed meeting. And there doesn't need to be discussion on this unless it's wanted. This is just based on my individual judgment and wish to have something put in the record on that. And that would be reflected in April 17th's minutes, not in today's.
Well, I just want to read sleep.
I don't agree with that, Luke. I'm sorry. I don't agree with that. No, no. Cannot.
All right.
Mayor, did the city attorney before you speak on this?
He did.
Yeah.
So, I spoke with the city attorney in a follow-up, and I don't want to characterize him because he cannot be here, but the conversation that we had is that he was not present for the discussion on February 6th and that the content of his email does not address what may have occurred in that meeting. It just addresses what the appropriateness would have been regarding the procedure to request.
Mayor, may I speak?
Yes.
Thank you. Unless the record shows, Luke, when we came back out and we voted on this closed session, did you abstain from the vote?
No, I voted yes.
Okay. That's all I need.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to play, I'm going to get really risky here and play city clerk. So, I apologize here, but I'm actually wondering if, since this is not an effort to amend the minutes, which is what you're voting on currently, I'm actually wondering if this wouldn't rather be under item 11, where you've got inquiries and comments by the mayor and members of city council? Because you're really wanting it added to this agenda in its minutes, would that be a more appropriate?
Yeah, that would be a more appropriate time. The discussion that I had with the city attorney originally is that I intended to amend the minutes for February 6th, but upon further reflection of Robert's rules, because it did not occur on February 6th, I cannot amend them.
Right, right. And that's why I'm just wondering if it makes more sense to do it under that particular item. That's the extent of my plain clerk, so.
And again, this is just a reflection of my individual judgment and something that I wish to be entered into the record. It does not reflect a judgment of the whole of city council.
Go ahead.
Then why would it be recorded in city council? If you have a personal opinion, then there's a place for that, run-up times, other places like that. But this is a government body and an official document. I don't come with, you know, my thoughts on all the issues to be put into the record. I do, like everybody else up here, we do it in the way that it's supposed to be done. And if you had such an issue of this, then why did you not vote no during that?
February 6th. Exactly.
That closed-meeting affirmation.
And not April 17th.
Thank you. That is what the content of the letter reflects, is that there should have been a departure indicated at that time. And since it did not occur, I want to make sure that for my own conscience and integrity that have something entered into the record.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I cannot go on with this. If Mr. Pretty had some concerns about any of this, it should have been addressed in February or even perhaps March. Why do we wait until April 17th to address that when clearly there are other things going on that could appear to be politically motivated? And I think it's inappropriate to do that on this dais and also inappropriate.
The point of personal privilege that this is not politically motivated. This is separate and a governance aspect. I had requested of the city clerk if the, when the February 6th minutes would be presented to council and when I'd have an opportunity to review them. They were not available for the last meeting, so this is the first opportunity for them to officially come up.
I would say that you also brought something similar up at the Audit Committee meeting in a very political way, and you're now doing that again. It is political.
Well, let me say this. We're now, Mr. Collins, are we asked to vote on anything here at this or...
No, I'm not asking for a vote on this item.
All right, so, okay, we've had the comments on it. Can we move on from this?
We can.
You still need a vote on this item, though, because it's been removed from the consent agenda.
Yeah, I would say I will move the approval of the minutes as they stand. Second.
But it's already been moved and seconded.
But now, but after following the discussion, we're not making any changes. That's why I wanted to just say...
She restated the motion.
Yes, I was just restating my motion. Thank you.
All right. All right, so we're back now to the...
To the roll call.
To the roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volsen?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And now, are we, we've got the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We just approved the consent agenda.
That's correct.
Thank you. All of a sudden, things, life gets complicated at times, I tell you, so.
It's only complicated as we make it, Mayor.
All right. We're down now to a regular agenda, item number 5 is the Public Area. We have none. Item number 6 is petitions and communications and the presentation of the Williamson Road Area Business Association State of the Road Report. And I'm pleased to recognize Valerie Brown, the Executive Director of the Williamson Road Area Business, as a spokesperson. And so, Valerie, welcome, and we're going to allot you 10 minutes if you need that.
Thank you, Mayor. And I won't take quite 10 minutes, I promise. Good afternoon, and thank you, Mayor Lee, and all members of the city council for this opportunity to talk with you again about one of my most favorite topics, the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association. On my last visit, I shared a recent video that we had put together about Williamson Road. I don't have a video today, so in lieu of that, I would like to take just one small moment to share a bit of Williamson Road's rich and colorful and fascinating history. The first real settler in our area was Mark Evans. Granted, he was running from the authorities in Pennsylvania and Maryland because he had a price on his head for being a plotter. That is someone who is living on disputed land. The important note for us is that he built his home beside what he called Evans Spring and what is now the Williamson Road area. His acreage of choice land in Gushing Springs totaled 1,910 acres. I also want to add that we also have history on top of history. George Washington did, in fact, sleep in Roanoke. He slept in the home of Widow Evans in 1756 while he was in the area inspecting forts. And in 1769, one of Williamson Road's predecessors, William Christian, married the daughter of the Patrick Henry. All of this historical color led to the birth of Williamson Road and the development of business. The dream back then, and still true today, was for the road to become a strip of attractive and successful business places. It was hoped to be an asset to the Williamson Road community and to the city of Roanoke at large. Now to bring us to today. As many of you may know, with January 2nd of this year, I began Year 5 as the Executive Director for the Greater Williamson Road area. Today, I would like to share with you what we have accomplished particularly in just a few short years, and then some of the plans we have moving forward. The Williamson Road Area Business Association, or RABBA, as it has been known, was begun almost 42 years ago with the intention to help pursue endeavors to improve the economic strength and enhance the quality of life on Williamson Road. We have come a long way in 42 years, but never so far as we have come in the past five years. As an example, we are now known as the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association, or GRABBA, or even better, just Williamson Road. During this time, we have also added, as a further incentive for what we do, the provision to provide added assistance to foster business recruitment and retention, as well as plan for the development and revitalization of the area that leads us into Roanoke City. These past almost five years added to the 40 years before have clearly evidenced Williamson Road's commitment to the areas of economic development, city beautification, strategic planning, and public safety. The image and reputation of the Williamson Road area has continued to grow stronger. As a solid example, and in recognition that Williamson Road is truly a microcosm of the world with so many international restaurants and businesses, we have in our fiscal year 2024 work plan, as well as in its overarching strategic plan, developed additional guidelines to help set up inroads into the ethnic communities to build relationships and be responsive to the greater community. Briefly, just a few highlights of what we have been able to accomplish with much gratitude to the SSD funding we received from the city, for which we are eternally grateful. We have spent significant time relationship-building. We want the businesses to know we are here for them. We have monthly luncheons, and if you haven't been to one, I invite you, please come. It's always the third Tuesday of each month. We have gone from 30 to 40 attendees to 100-plus every month on a regular basis. The support, the networking, and the food, they're all good reasons to attend. And as an aside, if you're free tomorrow, tomorrow is that Tuesday in April. In support of our restaurants in both the city and the county, we instituted the first ever Passport Travel the World on Williamson Road. We've done this for the past few years. It's been a very successful endeavor highlighting our many restaurants and their international cuisines. During the pandemic, we hosted pop-up drive-in movies in the back four acres behind the newly renovated Happies, now known as Fort Knox Storage Facility. We held seven different weekend movie nights and had well over 2,000 in attendance over that period of time. Families enjoying fun movies, food trucks, just enjoying what families do best, and that's spending time together. And always thinking bigger, last year, we submitted a grant to the Department of Housing and Community Development with a proposal to build a shared office workspace for new and existing small businesses. The grant, in the amount of $150,000, was awarded to us and was used as seed money to build the shared office workspace we have today called The Williamson, allowing us to begin a strong business revitalization program on Williamson Road, reaching both into the city and into the county. This space acts as a brewing ground for the next generation of business owners by offering them help with training and networking opportunities. And our plan and our hope is that once these businesses are ready to go out and have businesses of their own, renting or owning outright, that they will look to the Greater Williamson Road area for their establishment. For the first time, Williamson Road took part in National Night Out this past August. We had well over 1,000 people enjoy Williamson Road, meet and visit with our first responders, as well as members of our military. Children and adults of all ages took part in rock climbing and hula hoop contests, and all walked away with smiles. Everyone had a great time. So, these past four years were certainly successful and fun. So these past four years were certainly successful and fun. And now, for the next. First, just to go back to The Williamson for a minute, our collab, our shared office workspace, has been and continues to be a very successful endeavor. Our private offices are full, and several of our open-air desk areas are being used, as is our conference room. We have inquiries from all over Virginia, people passing through who need an office space for a day, a week, or longer. In fact, someone was coming to Roanoke for a family event but needed to work, so she rented out our conference room for the day, all the way from Tampa, Florida. So you gotta love Google for that. And rest assured, I will be seeking additional funding from the development of housing and community development to help us further grow and further expand. People often hear me talk of the diversity and international flavor of Williamson Road. 2023 is the year to celebrate this honor and to work with and for our business and owners. And much of this celebration will be events. We want to include all those who make up our Greater Williamson Road area, as well as those who support us and support the businesses. We work hard in meetings, but a lot of work does get done in play. So as some of your earlier speakers, I ask you to mark your calendars. In May, actually, on Cinco de Mayo, May 5th, we will be hosting our first golf tournament, Swing for the Green. The purpose of the tournament is, first of all, to have fun, and, second of all, to help us raise money to support a new endeavor we are initiating this year. With 2023, we are initiating a mini façade grant program. This program will allow us to help our business owners. I truly believe that if we take our businesses seriously, so will they. With this grant, we will be offering business owners the opportunity to apply for a small facade grant ranging anywhere from 500 to $3,000. And it will be used for improvements to the entrance of their business, for instance, landscape or painting, awnings, windows, doors, anything to help make their front more attractive to people who might want to go there and shop, just to make it just more inviting, just make it pretty. If chosen, we will work directly with a contractor to complete whatever work is being done. And there's a lot more to this program I'd like to share with you, and look forward to the opportunity outside of here to talk about that opportunity. But for right now, we're pretty excited about it. But all of the net proceeds from our events will go to help fund and continue this grant program, one that we want to continue for many years, and it's also one that I will be submitting another grant for, from the Commonwealth. From the beginning, when I first became executive director, I had three areas I wanted to focus on: safety, crime, and the support of businesses. With regards to safety, I think you're all aware of my partnership with the city's transportation department, on behalf of RABBA, and the motorists, cyclists, and pedestrians on Williamson Road. In this area, I am unwavering. We need to make the road safe for all. I will continue to work with Dwayne and his team, as well as VDOT, to arrive at the best solutions for the road and all its residents. I'm also committed to helping to solve the problem with the homeless population. I was recently invited to join with area church pastors and the rescue mission so that we can, first, identify the issues surrounding homelessness on Williamson Road in the nearby areas as well, and, second, how the churches and businesses might be able to come together and answer, and if it were a perfect world, solve some of the homeless issues on the road. We are once again considering taking part in National Night Out. If we do so this year, our plan will be to invite area neighborhoods to join us with their celebrations. We want our celebration of neighborhoods and first responders to be one of both and, not either or. And in this case, bigger is better. So also, mark your calendars for August 1st. And lastly, please mark your calendars for Saturday, October 21st, when we will be partnering with the Bergland Center and hosting our first annual International Wine and Food Festival, to be held in the Bella Vista Room at the Bergland Center, where we will be celebrating our diversity in not only food and wine, but in all that makes up all of Williamson Road. And again, all net proceeds will go into our facade grant program. We continue to work with the city's Department of Transportation and VDOT to address road and sidewalk safety concerns and issues on Williamson Road. We are also working with the Roanoke City Police Department and the city manager's office and other city offices to address crime on the road. And this area, the area of crime, along with the road and sidewalk safety, and our growing businesses, they are our priorities as we move forward. Many would say that the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association is comprised of a close-knit community, and we are. But at the same time, we want to continue to grow as many businesses as possible. Williamson Road, Herschberger Road, and area side roads are all areas that we are excited to work with the city to help grow and prosper. Truly one of our big 2023 goals. And we are grateful for our partnership with the city with regards to their support of our work through the SSD funding, and for that, thank you very much. With regards to our membership, our biggest asset, our goal is to increase our footprint. We want businesses to be aware of who we are, what we can do to help them, whether it be big or small, to connect area businesses into a powerful network through opportunities such as leadership sessions, advocacy programs, and mentorship programs. We have accomplished a great deal, and there is so much more to do. I am told I sometimes have a new idea every day, and maybe I do, but it's because there are so many people and business owners who love Roanoke City and Williamson Road, and who want to work hard and do work hard for what they want. Both I and my board look forward to working with and for all of our business owners, with all of you in the city, to make the road, the road, a better and the best road in which to live and work. We look forward to our collaboration and opportunities with and for the city in the coming days, weeks, months, and years. And I will be following this up with a formal submission of our upcoming budget, as well as our fiscal year work plan and our strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will receive that and file it. Mr. Collins, I'm going to, before the city manager comes, I want to adjourn for a minute. I want you to join me in my office with Mr. Pretty. All right? We're going to adjourn for about five minutes.[1073.13]
Thank you Mayor and Council. This is the briefing or the presentation of our recommended budget for FY '24. And first, I want to thank you all for taking the time to meet with me individually prior to this meeting, so that you had an idea of what we were going to be proposing as we move forward. So, thank you for that. I also want to thank Brent and Amelia and Paul and the rest of the budget team. You know, I always say that I get the benefit of being able to stand up here and present the information that really represents the hard work they've been doing over the last couple of months. So, I want to acknowledge the work that that team has done in getting us to this point. And they're not done yet. There's still more work to come, but certainly want to acknowledge that. And then also want to acknowledge the work of our directors, because obviously we build the budget aligned with your priorities, as well as my instructions and directives to the directors. And then they have to figure out how to actually make the requests that they have made in response to those. So, certainly want to acknowledge that and thank them for that. I like with this to probably start at the beginning, so I'm gonna start at the beginning. Or maybe I'm starting at the end, at the beginning. So, I want to say that we have a, what is proposed to you, is a balanced budget of $355,400,000. The rest of this presentation will explain how we got there and what that ultimately means as we go forward. So, there's a number of items that I want to cover in the presentation as we move forward. One of those is the process that we use here in the city to go through and develop the budget. The second is just a real quick sort of glimpse at the current year. I think it's important that we kind of ground ourselves in what the dollars that were approved the last time are currently in process of accomplishing. Then we'll move on to sort of the environment within which this budget was approved and within which you were reviewing it, as well as reminding everyone of the priorities that have been identified through this process. And then ultimately, the, talking about some of the revenue projections, as well as the expenditure overview, capital improvements, and then I'll end kind of where I started, which is the balancing status, which again, the budget proposal is balanced, but certainly we'll come back and show that again at the end of this process. You all will know probably all too well that the process for the budget development actually begins many, many months ago, back in fall. Our very first effort in this is the strategic plan retreat. And that is the opportunity for council to meet with senior staff over a couple of days, where you at that point are beginning to share your priorities. Most instances, that's reinforcing the long-term priorities we've had. You know, for example, education being our top priority, community safety the second priority, and so on. But it's also a time where you start to lay out a little bit more nuanced or specific priorities. This year, for example, a lot of conversation about compensation. So, and that's kind of where this starts, is in that, at that time with that retreat. The second item that we then moved to is actually the budget planning retreat, which takes place a little bit later. We pushed that back a little bit later this year in November, so that it could take place after the elections were held, so that we were sure that, certain that anyone newly elected to the council could participate in those discussions as well. That reinforces the items discussed at the strategic plan. It is also really the first time that you all and we start sharing the connection between those strategic priorities and budget consideration. It is also the first time we start talking about any impact or changes relative to the tax rates. So, that again, takes place in November. And then from that point forward, there's a lot of work that goes on with the staff. So, based on those priorities and directions that are received through those retreats, I provide instructions through the budget office to our, to our directors. We start projecting revenues as we move forward with it. And then ultimately, we end up coming back with you all on a series of briefings as we work our way through, through the process, leading up to the point at which I stand here and present to you the budget proposal that we have in response to those priorities as we have worked our way through. And then, at that point, really, it becomes more of your process to lead, because then it's followed by the public hearing on the budget proposal, as well as the tax rates, and also is ultimately a workshop, we'll talk about that at the end of this, and then action by the council for its approval. One of the things that you have, that we've talked about previously, and you probably have noticed by looking at the document that has been handed out, is we continue to evolve what the actual budgeting document looks like and how we actually craft the document. And I won't go into great detail on this, but you'll remember that we have for years used a process we refer to as budgeting for outcomes. And a couple of years ago, we started infusing equity into that. So, we started referring to it as budgeting for equitable and empowering outcomes. And that came along with a change in how the budget is actually presented. So, in addition to the priorities and how we're recommending funding around each of your seven priorities, you can now also dig down a bit deeper and look at the programs that are delivered by each department in response to, to those priorities. And we'll talk more about that as it goes through. But the budget looks different than, than it has certainly in the past, and that's by design as we work our way through. So, that's real quickly kind of the process that we use to get from the starting point to this point as we work through. Again, I just want to step back for a moment, talk about the current budget that we have in place and what has both happened, as well as how those dollars are being spent currently. Because I think it's important, before we talk about '24, what are we doing in '23, the current year? So, with the '23 budget, that enabled us to continue our public safety compensation enhancements, which I'll talk about again a little bit later. That constituted in this year a three and a half million dollar increase to police officers, firefighter, EMS, paramedics, as well as sheriff's deputies. It also provided a 5% pay increase for all non-sworn personnel. That was the largest pay increase that we have been able to do in the organization for many years. And it initiated additional compensation increases for other personnel. You'll recall, we referred to these as kind of the head start employees. And these were some of the DSS employees, some of the E-911, some of the Department of Technology, and some of the solid waste employees. It also, you obviously took action to rebate surplus on personal property tax. We also have been able to secure funding from the state to advance on the shared lab project. Of course, most recently, you approved the Riverdale redevelopment agreement. There are also a number of plans that you have taken action on, including the Neighborhood Centers Plan, as well as the Economic Development Strategic Plan. And of course, there are a number of ARPA-related projects that are underway. I won't go through all of those, but certainly want to highlight the Northwest Grocery, as well as Affordable Housing in Southeast, workforce development across the entire organization, and food insecurity collaboration with LEAP, but there are many others as well. You also were able to secure this year federal funding for the replacement of the Wiley Drive Low Water Bridge. We have secured a part of the property for replacement of fire station number two, initiated the redevelopment of the Washington Park Pool, initiated the redevelopment of the Eureka Recreation Center, completed design of the Main Street Bridge replacement, initiated the Evans Spring Development Planning Process, continued a number of playground replacements and athletic court resurfacing efforts, and of course, continued street paving, sidewalk replacement, bike lane programs, and welcomed the consolidation of the Branch Group Headquarters here in the old Kroger Regional Headquarters Building, and also celebrated the opening of the historic fire station number one, now occupied by Texture Furniture and other tenants as well. So, that obviously does not encompass everything that has occurred so far, but hopefully gives some sense of how the dollars that have been approved in this year are currently being used and the results that are arising from those. This slide is intended to share with you a little bit about the environment within which we are preparing this budget, and again, within which you will be reviewing this budget. The items on the left are really kind of contextual items, and the items on the right are the priorities that we have been talking about, going all the way back to that retreat in September. It should be no surprise to anyone that economic volatility is the name of the game, whether that is constantly changing interest rates, or whether that is historic inflation taking place, still was at the beginning of this process, remnants from COVID-19, ongoing workforce challenges, whether that is the national sort of great resignation that's occurring across, or the demand for higher wages across the country, Commonwealth and here. There is some state budget uncertainty. As we stand today, there is no state budget approved, and it probably will not be approved until after your budget is approved. There are implications, as we've discussed, mostly tied to schools, but also somewhat to us through our compensation board positions that are eligible. And I'll talk about that when we get into the budget a little bit further as well. We do benefit, and it's not all, a lot of it is good news. We do benefit from a very strong local economy that has rebounded quite well. And I'll talk about that when we get into the revenue section. And we are the beneficiaries of a significant, really historic amount of federal funding. Some of that through ARPA, and now some of that having access to the Bipartisan Infrastructure and Jobs Act, as well as the Inflation Reduction Act that we will be pursuing over the next several years, funding for, for those items as well. Some of the priorities that have been identified, again, going back to that retreat, well, the collection of retreats and further discussions that we've had, include addressing inflation-related costs. You've heard me use the example before that certainly, there is no question that our households and businesses in our community are facing unprecedented pressures from inflation. And so are, so are we as an organization. We're certainly not immune to that. As a matter of fact, we kind of get hit from a couple of directions. I often talk about, there's no doubt that purchasing a new car, for example, has cost more now than it did before. We buy fire trucks. They cost a whole lot more than they did before as well. Also, all of our construction projects have gone up in costs substantially, as again, we deal with supply chain issues, as well as inflationary costs. And unfortunately, many of our capital projects are only possible by borrowing. And of course, the cost of borrowing has gone up as, as well. We do continue to support, or one of the priorities is to continue to support COVID recovery. One of the top priorities was to address, continue to address employee compensation, maintain the strength of the pension plan, maintain strong core service levels, and continue investments in our community. So, those were kind of the marching orders, if you were going into the development of this budget, coming from you all in those retreats and conversations as, as we went along. And hopefully, through the presentation of this budget, you'll see the response to those, to those priorities. And I'll start with, with those. So, these, these six items are really to set the kind of stage and set the tone of what this budget accomplishes in response to the requests and the priorities that you had established. It includes a historic investment in schools, and I'll go through each one of these in subsequent slides in a little more detail. A continued commitment to public safety, continued commitment to recruiting, retaining, and recognizing employees, increased investments in infrastructure and in livability, and continued support for our community partners. Tied to schools, this budget proposal proposes a historic level of funding, actually, and nearly nine additional million dollars going to the Roanoke City Public Schools year over year, from last year's budget to this year's budget, a $9 million increase. And most notably, that moves us across the threshold of $100 million of local support. So, this budget represents $101.5 million of local support going to the Roanoke City Public Schools. The budget also continues to support the schools' efforts at restoring, remodeling, and renovating their facilities. So, there are debt issuances. They are responsible for using the dollars that are provided from us and the state to service that debt, but that debt, as you all know, does account for some of our policy as well, and therefore, we have to be involved in that process. And that approved debt will enable the replacement of the Preston Park Elementary School and some other improvements at Lincoln Terrace, Hurt Park, as well as Fishwick Middle School as well. So, so that's kind of priority number one, is that historic investment in schools. It also enables our and your commitment to public safety to continue. This budget proposal enables the completion of the public safety compensation enhancements. This is the stepped pay plan that we've been in process over the last couple of years to do. There is $2.18 million going toward that effort this year. And with the approval of this budget, it will represent nearly $9 million in the last basically two and a half years that have gone into salaries for our police officers, fire EMS personnel, and sheriff's deputies. And again, that is only possible because you all have allowed us to be able to actually put those kinds of dollars toward, toward that commitment. So, that's the compensation piece of public safety. We are also moving a currently grant-funded position, which is our Youth and Gang Violence Coordinator. This is Chris Roberts' position. Will be actually moved on to payroll instead of, the grant funding is ending, and we're retaining that position. We are also proposing to bring a pneumatic unit online at Station 14. Obviously, there's been a lot of growth in that area, particularly growth that we anticipate based on call volume to make, to be heavy users of the, of the ambulants and the paramedics as well. That includes a new ambulance, as well as six EMS personnel. And this includes replacement of the hazmat vehicles, ambulance, police units, K-9 units, and completes the land acquisition and site preparation for the replacement of fire station number two. So, that is the commitment to public safety that is included in there. And I should say, and you'll see this a little bit later, these are still the highlights. There are other things that are actually being approved in the budget, even in each of these categories, just trying to stay focused on the, on the top line items. The third priority that, that you all had identified and that we certainly supported as we went through was tied to compensation for our, what we will refer to as our general employees. So, these are the folks who are not sworn, in sworn positions with public safety. And so, this priority focusing on recruiting, retaining, and recognizing employees, all total proposes, and this include, this piece includes public safety, this budget includes a $10 million item, request for compensation. Again, that includes the $2.18 million for public safety that I just mentioned. It also includes $3.83 million to sustain and complete those head start positions. So, if you remember, I made reference that some of the DSS positions were able to be moved ahead six months early, some of the DOT positions and so on. This allows us to round those out. So, everyone that's in DSS, everyone that's E-911, everyone that is in the Department of Technology, and everyone that's in solid waste, will all advance to our new target minimums with, with that. That will be accomplished with that $3.83 million. The $2.63 million is to progress all of the other employees toward the new target minimum. So, you'll remember when we started this process, one of the objectives that I had was to, with the compensation study we had, we've identified new pay grade minimums. This was based from our consultant on what This was based from our consultant on what we believe we need to be paying at a minimum to be competitive in the marketplace. That's why we got the head start on those non-public safety positions underway. And my objective this year, for this budget, was to be able to move all of our remaining employees into that category. And as you all know from our individual meetings, we're not able to do that. The amount to go, to get there pushes us over $12 to $13 million, and we simply don't have enough revenue to get there. But, we're going to get as far as we possibly can, so that's what this $2.63 million is geared toward, which is moving employees toward their new minimums. So, if an employee is already at or above that new minimum for their pay grade, then they will receive a $2,000 increase to their base salary. If that employee is below their new minimum pay grade, they will advance toward that new pay grade, and they will either receive at least $2,000, or they will receive up to a 7% pay increase, that's the cap on that piece of that as well. And then anyone, and again, that covers everyone that is either below or at those as well. And there's $856,000 in the budget that's related to that $2,000 number. The $2.63 number is related to those that will advance up to their minimum, up to that cap of 7%. The good news is, that will address around 90% of our workforce. So, we have about 200 positions that are still below the minimum. They will become, obviously, our number one priority in FY '25, as we attempt to move them into that next category, getting them up to the minimum. They're not necessarily concentrated in any one position, it's kind of scattered across the organization, really dependent on when you came into the organization, how you've advanced through the organization, and so on. And then there is a recommendation for 3% increases for constitutional officers, appointed officials, and directors. And this is where, I'm putting asterisk next to this, where the lack of approval of a state budget has an impact here on this one as well, because our constitutional officers are comp board eligible positions, and right now, this recommends 3%. However, the state budget has elements in it that are 5% and 7%. So, what this would do, depending on what the state budget includes, is it would move folks near that. And then we, whatever gets approved, we'll have to add to that as well. But, since we don't know what that is, we, at this point, are not able to move in that direction with it. But, again, they'll qualify for that 3%. That's $159,000 with it. I should note also, that at this point, it's likely to be our recommendation that that 3% number is what we will use to establish the COLA, the Cost of Living Adjustment for Retirees. As you all know, we have a formula that we use, and typically, if we give employees a 3% pay raise, then that's the percentage that's used. If we give employees a 5% pay rate, that's the percentage we use. Since this approach that we're doing is not across-the-board percentage, it varies whether it's public safety, or whether it's others, the 3% is what we're likely to bring forward as a recommendation when we get into the payordens at the meetings following this.
Bob, let me ask you a question.
Sure, sure.
Where do the sheriffs, and when we talk about the constitutional officers, where do they fit in?
So, they fit right now, and we are moving them on to the STEP Pay Plan as well, just like we have with our police officers and firefighters. However, same thing, so we'll move them into those STEP Pay Plans, and that's set, but if the state comes in and says, "All of the comp board eligible deputies are required to be paid a 5% increase, or a 7% increase," we'll take what we've already given, and see how much further we need to go to meet that number. That's what we had to do the last two years, because they did the same, the same kind of thing with it. So, they'll be, and then we'll adjust the STEP Pay Plan most likely to reflect that. But, they're in that same public safety piece as well. And then from that point forward, then they'll do like all of the other public safety employees, which is they'll move to the next step each year, and work their way through that process as well.
If the state comes in, and, which I assume that it will, assuming it will, what can they do, instead of pulling, can they take the money that they got, and put that in a multi-year account?
From the money coming from the state? Or from?
From the money that we give them.
No, the money, so the money that, if we do it through compensation like we're talking about, and let's just say, I'm just making this number up for illustration's sake, but let's say that our increase represented a 4% increase. So, each of the deputies were advancing 4%, and the state came in and said, "We're going to offer a 5% pay increase." Because remember, that 5% pay increase is also only on a part of their salary, because we actually supplement their salaries. So, then we would take what we've done with 4%, and we would add to it to get to the 5% number. We also have a number of deputies, and I'm just using deputies, there are others in this case too, who are not comp board eligible. So, they're 100% locally funded, and at that point, we'll have to make a decision, most likely we will, where we'll fund those positions to match the salary that the comp board eligible positions are getting, very similar to what the schools have to do, when the schools not, when the state, you know, announces they're giving teachers a 7% pay increase, or whatever it might be. Not all of the teachers actually qualify for that state funding, so the school board has to make a decision of how they'll actually make the other teachers whole. So, that's how we approach that with, and that's true for all of our comp board eligible, whether they're in the courts, or in the clerk's office, or wherever, the court clerk's office and stuff.
Can I follow up with that, Mr. Cal? So, what line item would the sheriff had, I mean, have, that he could use money that's left over in his budget to create a multi-year count? Is there any situation where he would have any money left over in his budget that he could then retain for a multi-year count?
He would, most likely, he would actually have to set up a fund to be able to do that, because again, you still have to account for the funding going from one fiscal year to the other fiscal year. I don't know.
So, but he could set up a fund?
Possibly.
And then he could retain some of the funds that would come to our general funds, and keep it in that multi-year?
I think it would probably instead be something that you all would identify, that you would fund at a certain level, rather than trying to hold back funding. Because remember, we, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but, so, the vast majority of the sheriff's budget is actually locally funded, not funded by the state. So, when you hear, when you hear comments about how there's money coming from the state, and the city is in effect claiming those dollars, we actually, you all actually supplement the sheriff's department well beyond what we receive from the state, because the salary that the state provides for the deputies is significantly lower than what we pay the deputies. So, it probably would be more likely that you would establish a fund, that you would actually identify funding for, and actually put the dollars in there, rather than try to claim some sort of surplus, because there is no surplus at the end.
Okay, that's where I'm confused, because based on my conversations with the sheriff, there has been a surplus that is sent over to the city, and we put it in general funds.
Yeah.
So, you're saying that does not exist?
No, because we, remember, we actually pay overall for the salaries, there are more local dollars going into it. So, what I think the sheriff is referring to is, and I use my example again, where if we fund it in this budget, if we fund it for a 4% pay increase, and they got a 5%, the state is paying us on a portion of their salary for the entirety of that 5%. The sheriff is, in some instances, trying to claim that there is a surplus, because we already have paid for the 4%. That is, that is not the direction that we've received from the comp board. As long as we don't supplant what the comp board is doing, in other words, came in and said, "We're not going to give you the 5%, and we're going to claim all of those dollars." We can offset those dollars, because we're actually, again, paying for more of the salary than what the state is actually covering in its entirety.
So, in theory, he's saying that that money has already been budgeted, and so why can't he retain that, in essence, I guess?
Right.
And use it for a multi-year count? But, you're saying that even though it was budgeted?
Correct.
And he didn't use it?
Yeah, what I think would be a better approach is that there actually be an identification of what the multi-year account is, and what it would be for, and then actually have that as a budget item, rather than actually trying to, in effect, build a fund balance associated with it. Because he does not, again, I'll come back and say, when you look at the sheriff's department budget, the state funding of that part of the budget is significantly less than what is actually funded. So, there is no surplus, because at the end of that process, local dollars have paid for more of the sheriff's budget than have state dollars. So, it would be better to actually identify what is the purpose of a multi-year fund, and then identifying it as a budget item.
Yeah, I think the purpose would be for large items like, you know, the fridge, or the cooker, or something like that.
And we'll talk about, we'll talk about those, and how we fund those in just a few minutes as well.
Okay, yeah, and I think we need, maybe when you get a chance, maybe also talk with the sheriff, because he thinks he is able to create that multi-year count with those funds, and what you just said to us is, that is not the case.
He can create multi-year accounts, I think it just may not be from the source that he's identifying.
That he's identifying, okay. Thank you.
And then, of course, we will be able to continue to provide the minimum $15 an hour for our employees. That's true whether they're temporary, seasonal, part-time, or full-time. And then, as you all know from previous discussions as well, this budget includes a contribution into, through our fringe benefits, into our pension fund. That will be true over the next few years, goes back to that economic volatility. We invest, obviously, our dollars, as do all pension funds, into, in part, equities, and of course, the volatility of the stock market has affected those earnings, and so we have to make sure that we continue to keep that viable as we move forward with it. As far as the other priority around investment in infrastructure, this proposes, this budget proposes $3.7 million in stormwater improvements, $2.9 million in sidewalk repair and replacement, and that will equate to about 16 miles of sidewalks being newly constructed. One of the larger images you have at your desk shows sort of the sidewalks. The green in the sidewalks are all of the existing sidewalks, the black areas on there are the sidewalks we anticipate actually working on in this, with this budget. The other large document that you have is actually the street paving, so there is $5.3 million in this budget for street paving, and associated ADA ramps, crosswalks, and striping. So, when you look at that image, and let me actually move, and the reason I print it out, so you didn't have to try to figure out how to do this, and if anyone's viewing this online, you can actually, this map is from our GIS map. If you go to the city's website, in the Public Works or City Engineering Department, there is actually this graphic that you can pull up, and it will show you every street that is intended to be paved, starting in '22 and going all the way through '26. So, on the graphics that you have, the streets that are identified in red are those street segments that are anticipated to be paved through this $5.3 million. That is about 64 lane miles of paving that will take place within the city, as, again, as a priority. We also have $1.9 million in bridge renovations. This is in addition to the much larger amount of money that's going into the Main Street Bridge. These are for replacement of 13th Street Bridge Southwest, and the Wiley Drive Bridge Replacement, which includes the $2.5 million we secured from federal funding as well. This includes $4.4 million in fleet replacement. Again, that includes things like the hazmat vehicle, the fire truck, the ambulance, and so on, as well as some of our other types of equipment and fleet. And then $2.5 million in government building renovation and repair. That tends to be things like the magistrate's office, or roofs, or those types of activities. So, that are the priority, infrastructure investments. The investments in livability, this continues your priority over the last couple of years of investing heavily in our parks and recreation facilities. So, there is $16.9 million in total, that does include $13 million, which we've already appropriated out of the ARPA funding to go toward the Eureka Recreation Center, and the replacement of the Washington Park Pool. It also includes, of course, the recently acquired Richardson Wayland property on, next to Memorial Drive. There are three buildings, one of those buildings is being renovated for the offices for the Parks Department, so that is included in this, and it does include the replacement of the skate park. So, there is funding in the budget proposal, which will enable us, starting this year, to design and begin the replacement of the skate park. We are not going to wait till the completion of the Main Street Bridge to do that, so we're moving that forward. This does also include $1.5 million in Burgland Center renovations. It does also include an additional, or increase in the GRTC subsidy, that is to pay for the compensation increases that were awarded to the operators there at GRTC. And it includes $108,000 for increased tree maintenance and mowing contracts. The tree maintenance is actually associated with, if you remember, we're using quite a bit of ARPA dollars over the next three years to plant a significant number of trees. This actually is another person, Urban Forestry, to help make sure those trees stay healthy as we work forward. The mowing contract is $50,000, will be added to the mowing cycle that we do. That will allow us to complement what it is that the Parks staff is doing, with additional mowing coming from private mowers in order to do that. And I'll come back to a discussion on kind of the overall sort of outsourcing piece in just a moment and stuff.
Mr. Cal, is that any?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Cal, since we're talking about the trees and the planting, will they be able to also maintain some of the existing trees? Because like the ones like, you know, my husband just, he hates it when they're being strangled by the ivy and stuff, will they be able to maintain some of those?
Yeah, most of our, you know, most of our maintenance over the last several years has been actually the need to cut down trees that have been either diseased, or actually have reached the end of their life. The additional person will allow us to take care of both, of what is newly being planted, as well as trees that we already have.
That we already have, that we could possibly save.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And there's actually, if you haven't seen it, there's actually a really good video on the Parks Facebook page, that shows some of the efforts that were taking place in order to actually do some work on some of the existing trees, to try to keep those living longer.
That's great. That's great.
Can I just ask a question? And you may have answered this, and I think you did, but just from me, just from my understanding, when we have to remove trees, are we replacing those trees?
We do, they're not always, it's not always immediate. So, what, a good example is, I'll use Brandon Road, for example. There were trees removed in that area over the last few years, and then last year, we went and actually planted all new trees along Brandon Avenue. We'll tend to actually want to try to plant in groups, it's cheaper to be able to actually do that. So, there may be trees cut down, that it would take a couple of years before we would come back in and actually replant those. Also, surprisingly, there are property owners that do not want us planting trees. Now, it's technically on city property where we plant them, but either they park on the street next to it, or they just don't want a tree there. And so, we try to work with them to the extent we can, but we're also trying to plant the street trees back where we can with it and stuff. But, we have, and I don't remember, I don't remember the exact number, we, with the funding you all have authorized over the last couple of years, we actually got closer to a one-to-one replacement, whereas before, we were cutting down probably three to four trees for every one that we were planting. We're now getting closer to a one-to-one planting with it.
And are you replacing it with the same species?
Not necessarily, we're trying, yeah, the forest, the urban foresters will determine what the most likely trees are to succeed. And we're also trying to add diversity, because one of the things we have found is, when you plant a bunch of red oaks all at the same time, then 50 years later, all the red oaks all at the same time have to come out, this allows some diversity in that. We do focus on shade trees, though, because that's the idea here, rather than ornamentals. We will plant ornamentals in our parks as well, but these are really geared toward the shade trees. Let me go to the next priority. So, one of the other priorities that you have consistently elevated is the support for our community partners. As you all know, some of these are determined by formula, usually by the state telling us what we have to provide, and a good example of that is with the Health Department. So, when you see $123,457 increase to the Health Department, that is because that is what the state has said we owe the Health Department to go forward. Blue Ridge Behavioral is another example of that, although this year, our formula funding for Blue Ridge Behavioral is actually lower, first time that I know of in a number of years, and that's based on who's using the services across all of the jurisdictions with it, so that has gone down. A few others are by formula that you all have entered into, so think, for example, DRI, Williamson Road Area Business Association, VBR, and others. So, it's a formula, but it's a formula that you've put in place with other, for other reasons, and so there are increases associated with each of those in here as well. And then the last category are purely discretionary. So, these are items that you have identified as priorities over the years. Think of things like Mill Mountain Zoo, RV TV, a couple of our event sponsorships as well. So, there are requests for increases associated with each of those as well. All total, with all of those different approaches, your support for community partners is about $11.5 million in this budget. That is $715,000 over last year, although, again, the majority of that has passed through because of formulas, not new dollars that we're taking through the general fund piece of it. One notable decrease is actually a reduction in funding of $140,000, almost $150,000 from the, to the Broadband Authority. The reason for that is, if you remember, when we entered into the Broadband Authority along with the city of Salem and Roanoke County, we did so knowing that there were two costs that we would cover. One of those is jointly between the three jurisdictions, the cost of debt associated with building out the network. The other was an operating subsidy, and that operating subsidy was intended to begin rolling off, or really end by the sixth year or so, and we have reached that point actually last year. So, this reduction takes us down to an operating subsidy of only $100,000, and next year, it will be zeroed out. So, we're actually moving, and that's true in the budget submitted by Salem, as well as the budget submitted by Roanoke County, so all three are moving in that direction. Yes, ma'am.
Bob, since I'm the only one here that was part of Virginia First Cities when we were in that, I'm sure if the council members didn't talk to you about that, could you share with them what that does?
Yeah, so Virginia First Cities is a group, really, of the larger, original, if you will, or more industrial cities as well across Virginia. So, think of places like Danville, for example, and I think Lynchburg is a part of the Virginia First Cities, and they are uniquely positioned And they are uniquely positioned alongside VML. So there's a very strong relationship with VML, where VML represents all of the municipalities across the state. This group of first cities is actually focused on the older urban cities and the unique challenges that they face, both in learning from one another, but also in lobbying the state as a separate group than from perhaps what VML is able to do and stuff as well. We were long-term members of this organization. I think around the time of the recession, we pulled back our representation. We are the notable exception of the eligible cities that can be a part of this. We are the only one that has not been a part of this. And so we are recommending rejoining that coalition as well. It is based off of a population formula, is how they arrive at the dollars associated with it. And again, it is something that if we feel ultimately we're not getting value from, we can certainly step back as we move along as well.
May I ask just one quick question? This is real quick, Mr. Powell. How do you want us to contact you if we have some questions about some of these? Do you want us to email you, or will you have time to do some further discussion? I know you've spent a lot of time discussing these individually.
Absolutely. If you hold to the very end, I'll explain kind of how we can have further conversations.
How we can do it, okay. Perfect.
Yes, thank you. This slide on federal support is really just a reminder. Those items that I just listed, those six items were the, are the priorities in this budget from what you defined as priorities through those retreats. But I do think it's important, again, to remind folks that alongside these investments that we're talking about, there are these investments that we're making that are the result of funds that we're securing from the federal government, whether those are through the American Rescue Plan Act, or, again, some of the more recent acts approved by Congress, as well as our entitlement funding that comes from HUD, which over the last couple of years has been expanded. And you'll actually hear a briefing a bit later today regarding that particular project. And occasionally, that direct funding, such as in the case with the Wiley Road Bridge, that's not a very common occurrence, but if the possibility arises, we certainly will take a look at those opportunities. So those are the priorities, and what we're really trying to accomplish with this budget request in response to what you have asked us to do. Obviously, it takes money to do that. And, you know, no surprise, this is the part that starts to get a little more challenging, I guess, for folks in that, that revenue that we use, the revenue comes from tax dollars. You know, it comes from predominantly tax dollars. Also will come from fees and charges for services as well, but you'll see as we move through these. The proposal that I have put before you, based off of the, again, the conversations that we have had and the things we're trying to accomplish, maintains all the tax rates at their current level. Certainly, we'll talk more about that as we move through here. This slide really focuses on the local tax side of things, and you can see in each of these categories how the local taxes are projected to perform. So for, over 40% of our budget is dependent on real estate tax revenue. And you all know, of course, that the real estate tax revenue has increased as the real estate market has maintained its strength. Personal property has started to level back out to a more normal kind of increase versus what we saw before. And I meant to look at this number before I came in here, but, and I don't know this exactly, so these are not exact numbers. But, you know, by comparison, for example, Roanoke County, which is largely the same number of households as we have, have seen their numbers stay eight, nine, $10 million above our numbers, which is generally a reflection of probably newer vehicles and more expensive vehicles than what we see. Of course, you all know, because you took action on this recently, embedded in the personal property tax and reflected in these numbers is over $8 million worth of relief that is granted each year from funds that the state provides us as well. Sales tax is certainly strong, although there's a cautionary tale kind of behind that, which is, some part of that is due to increased consumption, some part of it is due to inflation, as things cost more, sales tax generates more. So as inflation starts hopefully to cool, you might see that start to level off a bit as we go into the future. Transit occupancy is definitely increasing and is strong in many cases. Hotel Roanoke is a really good example. It has returned stronger than pre-pandemic levels. The conference center is still not quite there, but certainly the hotel is. So you're seeing, that's why you see a significant increase in that item as it starts to recover back toward pre-pandemic levels. Prepared food and beverages, so this is our restaurants and bars, those certainly have come on stronger. However, they have not really returned to pre-pandemic levels yet. We do anticipate growth in that area, but not necessarily in what we would hopefully ultimately see as well. So when you look at the projection for local taxes, that is an increase year over year from budget over budget of about $22.8 million. You all know that we take that $22.8 million and we start dividing it up. And so some part of that goes to Virginia's Blue Ridge by formula. Again, we collect tax dollars to pass on to Virginia's Blue Ridge. Some of it goes on to our districts, such as Williamson Road and DRI. Again, we collect taxes and forward it on to them. And of course, most substantially, 40% of the local taxes after that go to the Roanoke City Public Schools. So $9 million of that $22 million is going to fund the schools. That leaves us $13.4 million out of that new growth in local taxes to pay for what we want to do as we go forward. And I would ask that, you know, you kind of remind, remember back, or reflect back, that $10 million number I shared with you on compensation. So out of that $13 million, $10 million of that is going to compensation. Fortunately, local tax revenue is not the only revenue that we receive in order to actually generate the dollars that we need to actually affect what it is that we're trying to do here as well. So in addition to the local tax revenue, we also receive, as I mentioned, fees for permits and licenses for services that are being rendered. We obviously also have intergovernmental transfers, which is a substantial number. So, for example, the state helps us cover the cost of DSS, for example. And so those projections are expected to increase as well. Again, charges for services, that is predominantly things like stormwater, where we're charging for that utility and for its services. One of the ones I want to note, since it kind of jumps off the page, it 646% increase, and that's associated with the revenue from use of money and property. This is the beneficial side of inflation, which is, we have investments. We collect dollars once or twice a year, and then we use those dollars throughout the whole year. And so those dollars are invested. That's what our treasurer does, invest those. And we've got the federal dollars from the ARPA funding, that as we spend those dollars, we're also investing those until they need to be spent. We are, of course, benefiting from record-high interest rates. And so almost all of that is associated with interest earned on those investments and on those savings as well. So what we're expecting from revenue projections with all sources of revenue is year over year. So budget year '23 compared to budget year '24 is about a 9% growth in revenue. If you actually step back and look at what we actually think we will receive in '23 versus what we actually are proposing budgeting in '24, that's a little over 6% growth year over, year over year with it. There are, as you all know, we've talked about these previously, some fee adjustments associated with this as well. Most of the fee adjustments are tied to our enterprise operations. So people who derive services for things, for example, like parking, no tax dollars go into the parking operations. Only those folks that use parking are, and you'll remember, we're increasing the parking fees in order to cover security costs associated with it. Building inspection fees, which have not changed in more than 20 years, and when they changed 20 years ago, it was actually a decrease. So this is actually ensuring that all of the users of our inspection services are covering the cost of delivering, or more of the cost of delivering those services. A few small, that we talked about before, fire EMS fees tied with ambulances, that's helping us pay for that Medic 14 coming online as well. There is a small reduction in fees, and that's tied with background checks that the police department do. That fee will be eliminated. It actually costs more to collect the fee than it does to actually deliver the service. So that will be eliminated. That's the revenue side of it. On the expenditure side, and again, we've already kind of talked about the highlight items on it, this just graphically represents what has been true for a number of years, and it reflects our priorities. So 55% of our budget expenditures go toward either education or community safety. When you add in human services, that tells you that nearly 70% of all of the dollars that we collect go to either educating people in our community or taking care of them. That care may come in the form of police, fire EMS, or sheriff, or that it may come in the form of our DSS workers. But almost 70% of the budget goes toward those categories. As I mentioned, the priority expenditures that I highlighted are just some of the expenditures that are proposed in the budget, but they are certainly the most significant. This chart just simply shows you, we divide our expenditures, what we refer to as supplemental. So these are increases year over year between non-discretionary and discretionary. Non-discretionary items are those, again, that are either contractually or formula-driven that we have to actually honor. There's $13.7 million worth of those in there, but $9 million of that is actually the transfer to schools with it. On the discretionary side, there's $9.9 million in total, but 8.9 of that is compensation. So what that really is saying is, when you look at the discretionary enhancements in community safety, for example, or infrastructure, those are relatively small. And again, the reason they're relatively small is because our emphasis has been on those things that I mentioned before. School funding, community safety, funding for compensation, general employee compensation. And so therefore, the instructions to our directors were, we're not going to be in a position to fund very many enhancements beyond those particular items. And that's what this is intended to simply illustrate. You'll see that one line on there that's non-departmental, and again, it's the largest one, that's 9.9 million. I just want to dig just briefly, a little bit deeper in that, to share with you what makes up that 9 million. Most of it has to do with things like debt service. It includes that transfer I mentioned for the increase in subsidy to GRTC. It includes, obviously, as I mentioned, compensation, some increases in our workers' comp fund, because, again, we're self-insured, so we need to keep building that fund up in order to offset claims that we may receive. And then the other item that I note of lapse is, I think you all understand that though we budget for every position, we obviously have vacant positions. We don't leave those dollars tied up, because we know there's going to be a certain level of vacancy always in the organization. So even though those are budgeted, we account for those dollars not being spent as we balance the budget. So that's what goes into the lapse. That is somewhere around 3% of the positions. We anticipate remaining vacant, our vacancy number, obviously, at this point is significantly higher than that number with it. But it's one of the ways in which we can manage that flow a bit better. I'm going to shift real quickly to the capital improvements and one-time items. So as I mentioned earlier, we tend to fund many of our capital improvements through the issuance of debt. That debt obviously costs us something each year to retire a certain amount of principal and interest. So the amount of money that we have available this year through the proposal to spend on debt service is $16.5 million. You all know that rather than trying to fund an amount different each year, we try to smooth that out over a series of years. So this year, even though we will have access to $16.5 million, we anticipate the actual debt service that we need is $14.1 million. That leaves an excess debt service available for one-time capital expenditures of $2.4 million. For those of you that have been on the council for a while, you remember, we talked about this number decreasing over the years, and indeed it is. Not that many years ago, this number was five or $6 million. We're now down to $2 million. And not too distant future, there will probably not be this, as we use more of the available revenue to actually service the debt that we have. Now, debt rolls off, and hopefully we can refinance some of the debt, but those dollars will continue to decrease as we go along. Just as a reminder, you've seen this a number of times, but these are the capital projects that will be funded through that debt issuance. Remember, the most important column here is the FY '24 column, because that's the one you're really acting on at this point. The columns for '25, '26, '27, and '28 are the rest of the years of our capital program as we start to plan out those subsequent years. These are for things like bridge renovations, fire stations, libraries, parks, those kinds of things as well. And so this is the part of our CIP that's funded with debt. This is the list of the one-time funded items, or some of the one-time funded items, not all of them. So we have, we budget for elections, because we have to cover the cost of elections, but we never budget for the years that we have more elections. So we need to add $288,000 at a one-time for that. There are additions in fleet capital. You all have a formula based off the capital program, dollars to go to public art. So that's what that $123,000 is for, is that transfer over to public art. And then there's some additional expenditures on the transportation infrastructure. And there's much more detail behind each of these items that would tell you what goes into, these are not, for the most part, these are not one-time, one purchase. These are multiple purchases behind those items that total up to that point. This is, again, another way to look at the cash-funded items. One other column I want to draw your attention to is the last, second to last column on the right, which is the year-end surplus. So I mentioned earlier that our, the performance of the budget currently is performing better than budgeted. So sales tax is a really good example. Sales tax is occurring at a higher level currently than we had budgeted. So there's money that we actually then apply to one-time. Much of those dollars go into our fund balance, our reserves, and that's how we build up our reserves as we go forward. But there are also a number of items. This is where we get some of our street paving dollars. This is where we get some of our sidewalk dollars, as well as some of the vehicle replacement dollars. These are available only one-time, and they're not necessarily guaranteed each year. Some years, we've actually had a deficit at the end of the year, where we actually had to pull back on expenditures. But this gives you a fuller picture of how those, how that cash will be used. I promised you that I would ultimately come to the end of this presentation with how I started, which is the balancing of the budget. So as mentioned, we project that we will receive $355,400,000 in revenue, and we have matched that projected revenue with the expenditure plans focused on the priorities that you have provided us and that I have mentioned. And I will leave you with the kind of one last consideration, then I'll come back to a couple of small items. The last consideration is, even as substantial and as positive as this budget proposal is, it would, I would do you a disservice, and I would do the public a disservice, if I left it to believe that all of our needs have been, have been met, that we can provide everything that we need to be providing for the community. So I want to highlight a few of those things. One is, we don't know where inflation is headed. It is sort of slowing currently. If it slows too fast, it could move us into a recession, and that will certainly impact not only this current budget and '24, but also subsequent budgets as well. That ties directly to that economic volatility as well. Also, though we've made significant progress in completing the public safety compensation increases in the last three years, we've just begun the compensation for the general employees. We've got a couple more years before we can actually call that a success as we move everyone toward what is more of a market-based compensation. We never are able to fully fund the needs in fleet and technology. I think there was probably more than $6 million worth of fleet needs identified in this budget, of which we're able to provide about $4 million toward. Technology is no different as well. So we have to continue to find ways in which to purchase those as well. And then the jail maintenance and upgrades. So we haven't, no surprise, we have an old jail. We have a jail that is in need both of maintenance items, and that list continues to grow, as well as it has items that just simply need to be upgraded. It's a 40-year-old jail and needs that information as well. When you go back and look at that CIP that I showed you, none of that is in the current CIP. We're working with the sheriff on actually building out, what does that, what does that look like? And that will probably be another conversation that we need to have with you all once we have a complete dollar amount. What do we want to do? What can we do? How will we do it? And what year would we do it in the, in the capital program as we move forward with it? Those are just some of the future considerations that I want to kind of elevate as we go through. As you all know, the next steps are, on April 27, will be the public hearing on the budget submission. The budget will be, probably already is, available on, online, so folks can actually view this document, which covers in more detail what we've been able to provide here as well. There are hard copies available also at the libraries, as well as in this building, if someone does not want to access that online as well. That public hearing will also include a public hearing on the proposed tax rates. And then on May 1 is when you all have your work session, where you talk about both a response to the budget proposal, as well as anything that you heard in the public hearing. And that all moves us toward a May 8 budget adoption. To your question, council member, is about how each of you can follow up as well. So obviously, you're certainly welcome to email me any, any questions that you might have from any of this as well. Also, because we did our one-on-one briefings before the submission this time, I do want to create the opportunity, if you want to meet in person individually, to go over what you now have as the budget, I'll certainly make that opportunity as well. And that would, that arguably could be anywhere between now and May 1, but you might want to do it before the public hearing, but it could, it could fit within either of those. So that, that's another way that you could certainly do that. I have one more thing I want to circle back with and open up for any questions that you might have. There were some questions, and I mentioned it on the mowing operation, there were some questions previously, as we went through our briefings, about outsourcing. So I want to talk a little bit about outsourcing. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time, but just give you a little bit of insight on, on what that is. And there's different reasons why we do some outsourcing. We don't do a tremendous amount of outsourcing here. Most of our services are provided by our employees. Good examples of kind of the most common outsourcing is, we don't do our own engineering. for the most part. You know, we, we will manage projects that other engineers that we have hired to do. So when you think of the design of a bridge, or you think of an architect designing a building, we don't do that in-house, we hire somebody to do that. So that's one of the most common outsourcing. We don't do our own street paving. We outsource that street paving to a company that bids to be able to do that. Same is true with technology. You all are all too familiar with PCI as an example. We don't write technology, we don't write code, we actually hire, outsource companies to actually do that work for us. We outsource our transit. Though GRTC, and you all actually operate through policy, Transit is actually a private company that actually provides, they're not our employees, they're the employees of that private company. So we outsource that. We outsource Park Roanoke, even though they are our parking garages and our parking lots, we have a private company that actually delivers those services and is overseen by Brian Mann, that's one of his responsibilities. Hotel Roanoke Conference Center Commission, so even though we own and operate, or we own a conference center, and we do so jointly with Virginia Tech, Virginia Tech Foundation, and an LLC with it, we actually have a private company that manages both of those entities, but certainly the conference center for us. Brian Mann also oversees that contract as well. So those are kind of the most common ones, that are kind of the bigger, more typical things. Some of the things that folks may not be aware of, so we have a language service program. Remember, Katie has been in here before to show you kind of on the iPad how someone can access our services online, in person, whether they need, regardless of what language they speak, if they need a sign language interpreter, and it's instantaneous through our iPad and other services that we have. And we outsource that, and the cost of doing that's about ten thousand dollars as, as an example. We also outsource our parts operations. So if you were to go over to our fleet shop, there is actually what amounts to a NAPA store that actually operates out of our fleet. So what we do is, they purchase, just like you would at a, a NAPA store, they purchase parts for us, and they sell them to us on a predetermined basis, which is just a, an add-on cost to what those items are. That is, there is actually a request this year that we're supporting to increase that by fifty thousand dollars. That is about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we spend on parts. That, that cost goes up as we're unable to replace vehicles, vehicles age, they need more parts and more, more repairs as well. We also outsource cleaning, so we do our own custodial services in this building, but our libraries don't necessarily benefit from that, we have to outsource those, and also our police department is outsourced with those. That is, together, those are about fifty thousand dollars for those cleaning services, that's for all the branches, as well as the, as well as again, the police station with that as well. I mentioned the mowing services, that fifty thousand dollars that I mentioned is the outsourcing, that's the total cost of that. We started that a few years ago, where based on the amount of personnel that we had, we simply were not able to keep up with the mowing schedule that we prefer to have. This allows us to have our mowing schedule, and then actually supplement that with the other, the others. Where we use that the most is when there's going to be an event, and that event occurs off-cycle, we'll have the contractor come in and actually do that, that mowing for us. And again, that's fifty thousand dollars. Increasingly, we're having to outsource what I'm going to call kind of high-skilled trades kinds of positions. You all have been at enough of our retirement parties, if you remember, we had a mechanic retire after fifty years here. When they leave, they leave with a skill set that you cannot replace, whether that's heating and cooling, whether that is working on fire trucks, whatever that might be. That requires us to outsource those services. So an example is, we, we spend about a hundred thousand dollars a year at private sources for fire truck repair, that in the past, we might have been able to do in-house. Now, we keep trying to rebuild those forces, so that hopefully, we'll be able to pull back on those. HVAC is again, is another example of that piece as well. We also outsource hazardous cleanup around, for example, our homeless camps. Many of our homeless camps that we clean are actually covered with needles. We do not use our forces to clean those up, we contract with a firm to do that, and we're actually including in this year's budget, twenty-five thousand dollars to actually help offset the costs with those. And we also outsource one of our pools, we did outsource both of our pool operations. So if you remember, Washington Park Pool was operated by the YMCA before it was closed for COVID, and then the Fallon Park Pool is operated by the Gators Club. And for the most part, that outsourcing is, they get to collect the charges that are associated with it, we buy the chemicals for that. We also started outsourcing two years ago, I believe, our after-school and summer camp efforts. Historically, those programs have been provided through part-time temporary employees. That became increasingly more and more difficult to secure, and we were actually reaching a point, we could no longer provide those services because we didn't have the workforce to do that. So what we did is, we took the value of those positions, didn't fill those positions, and we moved them over into professional services, went out for a bid for someone to actually provide those services for us, and, and that's what we're, that's what we've been doing. There was one extension, so there was an award of that, there's the ability to extend that contract, I believe, five times. So there's been one extension on that contract, and it's actually due as well. Let me give you a couple of numbers on that. At the time we did that, it was before we instituted the fifteen-dollar-an-hour pay for our temporary employees. So if we restored the temporary employees, if we could actually get the temporary employees, the number that we would need to deliver the service that we used to deliver and that we're currently delivering is about three hundred and sixty, sixty-three thousand dollars. So that's what it would take to actually operate the after-school programs and the summer programs. And we currently, under contract, have a contract that is not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's the work that, and, and what that's delivering for us is, the company that bid on that and is delivering those services is doing that through full-time employees, which allows them to have stability that our temporary part-time employees simply have not had. But we will have to continue to evaluate that, because at some point, we might be able to secure the workforce that we need to be able to deliver those services. So that, that's one of those as well that we've had. That was due, much like the trades one, where we've had outsourced because we don't have the people, that one, we don't have the people, and also again, some specialized mechanics we've had to actually outsource for those. So that is my quick kind of overview of sort of the outsourcing piece of it. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions about anything that we presented or any other questions that you might have. Again, recognizing that I know you just received the full document, and there'll be opportunities to ask other questions individually, and certainly at that May first meeting as well, but certainly want to help with anything that I can't help you with at this point.
Bob, I just had a question on something I forgot to ask, but in the area of technology. Teleprompters, are we going to get those? Can we get that, or is that being considered, or random, or however you do with it?
For what? What was it again there?
Teleprompters that you...
Oh, the teleprompter. We do actually have a teleprompter. So actually, in partnership with RV TV, we purchased a teleprompter. So if you remember, probably the last time when we did the All-America City competition, remember, they were still doing that remote? If you remember when we did the videos for it that was live, the teleprompter was there, that's actually a teleprompter that we own with RV TV. So we can get that, so if anybody, if at any time we're doing kind of one of those sort of presentations, we can actually use the teleprompter as well. They have one also just for RV TV, but this is one that'll use with us as well.
Be ready for the state of the city?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Bob, we've talked about this a little bit, the two of us, about doing, extending, or creating new standards for our tax relief program that we have for the elderly and disabled. Is that something that we can do this year, or is it something that will have to be done in the next fiscal?
As, as I understand it, if you, if there was a, well, and I'll come back to what's possible, if there was a desire to change what I'm going to call the thresholds that are associated with it, in order to qualify or apply for that relief, that has to take place in March. So as I understand it, although I would want to verify this, as I understand it, if there was a change in those thresholds, it would be something that would go into effect with the FY twenty-five budget preparation, is my understanding. But again, I would want to make sure that, that I know that. Let me quickly explain for those of you what, what this is. So, so the city offers a number of different tax relief options. One of those, we talked about with the state tied to personal property tax. On the real estate side, there is relief for elderly, for those, those are folks that are on fixed incomes, sixty-five and older, for those that are disabled and on fixed incomes, and also for veterans, there's a distinction with the veterans, which I'll come back to in just a moment. We also actually have tax relief programs for agricultural land use, so if you're, there's not many of those in the city, but if you get a farm, there's, there's actually a reduction in the tax value of the property. For leaseholds, these tend to be for organizations that have a lease on property, they're taxed differently than, than others. Energy improvements and solar installations, so we have tax relief for each of those as well. The largest tax relief program we actually have are for rehabilitation programs. So if somebody comes in and rehabilitates an older home, they qualify for a certain amount of tax credit for a certain period of time, or that many of our commercial redevelopments in downtown have qualified for those. That's by far the largest rehabilitation piece. On the, on the elderly and disabled, it's a tax freeze, so if you qualify, your taxes freeze at that, at that point, as you work through. Our current thresholds are, if you have, if you have incomes of, if you have a gross income of all of the residents and dwelling here, not to exceed forty-two thousand dollars. And there's actually some funding, I think it's up to seven thousand dollars, I think, that's actually discounted off of that, so you don't, like your first seven thousand dollars with income doesn't count against that forty-two thousand dollars. And as long as the household's combined net worth does not exceed a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, not including the value of the home, then you qualify. So it's not, it's a relief program that's tied to income, not to the value of the home associated with it. So the changes that are available, and, and I know Ryan has provided, I think, a couple of you sort of examples, when you look at all of the jurisdictions, and pretty much every jurisdiction offers something like this, when you look at those, there's a wide array of how you set those thresholds. The reality obviously is, right now, it's, it's capturing folks that are at the lowest end of kind of income. So really, the only possibility you have is to actually broaden the thresholds, which would allow folks that are making more money, or worth more, to qualify. So that, that's what the, the process would be. That's true for disabled as well. Once somebody that is disabled of low income reaches sixty-five, then they actually qualify under the sixty-five elderly freeze piece of it. The veterans piece is different, in that it is an exemption, no taxes paid. And so there is a process that you have to go through in order to, to make that declaration, but when you do so, then your taxes, unlike the elderly and disabled, are not frozen, they're actually exempted. So, so let me give you a couple of statistics with that. So in this current year that we're in, through the elderly tax freeze, about sixteen million dollars worth of value was frozen. That associated a lot, a loss, that, a reduction of about two hundred thousand dollars in revenue. On the disabled tax freeze, those that qualified, it was about eight million dollars worth of value that was frozen, and that resulted in a reduction of about ninety-five thousand dollars of revenue. On the, and this is where you see the difference between the freeze and the exemption, because for veterans, those that qualified under that program, it reduced values by thirty-eight million and reduced, reduced revenue by four hundred and sixty-four thousand. So obviously, because you're exempting the entirety of the taxes, that's a much more impactful program as well. So, so that, that hopefully gives you some sense of, I think the levers that you have access to are the parameters.
Yeah.
And I think, although again, I would want to qual, I would want to verify this, I think any change would affect the next year, not this year. One challenge that we have, if we move in that direction, is I don't know that anyone can give you a very good sense of what the impact of that could be, because since it's based on income, we don't know who's going to qualify. We don't know who qualifies, and then ultimately, who would actually make application and, and do so with it. You know, that would just be something you'd have to actually try to see if you can figure out a way, and, and we could certainly do that and stuff.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
I wanted to speak to that if I could, Mr. Mayor, because I did bring that up in January, looking at some viable options, and that was one. And as Peter has spoken with you, I suppose I had two, and I was glad that the Commissioner of Revenue was able to supply that, because as we know, Roanoke County is, and I'm looking at it, fifty-six thousand five, and you look at Salem, and Salem is fifty thousand, and like you said, we are at forty-three, I believe, or forty-two thousand.
Yeah, and in Roanoke County, the, their threshold is set at two hundred thousand.
Right, and I was set down less.
Salem, interestingly, is set at a hundred thousand, which is interesting.
Yes, I was looking, looking at that as well. But where I'm going with that is, if it is possible, because we have missed that opportunity for this year, because they have a deadline of filing between now, I mean, April now and up until May thirty-first, I believe, with those that would be interested in the application. So it would have to be next year, but I think it's something to want some further discussion, since the threshold, excuse me, has not changed since two thousand nine.
Yeah.
And I think it's time to look at that, to see if we can bring the threshold up maybe a little bit up higher.
And we can work with our real estate office and our commissioner's office to get a sense of, you know, I gave you those numbers of who's qualifying. What I don't know is, how many households is that?
Correct.
And it may give you a sense of, you know, if you move that threshold to match fifty-six dollars, whatever. Again, what it's doing is, it's saying, folks that have more income are going to qualify for that freeze, just so everybody understands that.
And yeah, I'm looking at more seniors coming on who cannot afford to pay real estate taxes, if this helps them to, to give them some kind of relief with everything else going up, as you know, I don't need to preach to the choir.
Yeah, so again, what we'll do is, we'll try to arrive at what that estimate might be, that impact with and stuff, and that would be both what we think might come off the tax rules, and ultimately, what the revenue implications that would be.
And that's what I'm interested in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We can certainly do that.
Bob, as early as I see that the budget reflects the increases from the state in the Children's Services Act, and I believe the most of us spoke about something at our last meeting, that all that money that's coming through is just state funds, and that the cities are responsible for the local match portion of it.
Correct. So you're, you're referring to the, were you referring to daycare?
Like, it's probably our last meeting.
The daycare discussion, I think that...
No, not daycare, private day school.
The private day school discussion, so yes, yes. So there's an increase of about one point nine million dollars, I think, that you all approved with it, and it is simply, we, we're moving that money through to the schools, most of which is actually coming from the state to offset the cost of that.
About one point three million. As other localities, I believe, they take their local match from their general fund before they give their money to the schools. And I hope in August, we might be able to make this part of a discussion with the schools about where that source of funding comes from, the local match, because I know that the costs are going up incredibly quick, and it has an impact on their bottom line.
Yeah, it definitely has an impact. Our, historically, our approach has been, since we're as generous with our formula and what they can retain, that's why I think historically, we've not passed it along, whereas some of the other communities don't allow, for example, the building up of the fund balance, or they may not even have a formula, but certainly, I think as we have more conversations with the school board about options, so that certainly could be, something would be discussed as well. And you're correct, it is a, it is a cost that's going up every year. So just last, last piece again, Mayor, just remind everyone that this information is, will be out there publicly, so folks can see it, they can pick up hard copy, or they can look at hard copies with it. Any of you that have questions or want to meet individually with us, please let me know, and we'll arrange that as we move forward. And I appreciate the, the time for this.
I just have one other question with regards to your outsourcing, Bob.
Sure.
You talked about the after-school program. What do we charge now for children to attend after-school program?
I know...
I remember when my, my granddaughter first started, it was fifteen dollars a week, and everyone else jumped on that, but I know it's not now.
I will have to find out, because I know what the contract, what we pay for the service with it, I don't know that that reflects necessarily the cost that is actually passed.
Does that have to offset the cost of outsourcing to?
Right. Yeah, so let me get that number for you, what we charge for, for that. I know, again, I know the cost that we pay, because their contract is structured so that we pay them on a per-child basis.
Right.
So it's structured on that piece, but yes, I think what we pay them is in excess of what they might charge for any youth to participate, but I'll, I'll get that number.
Because I think it's about seventy-five dollars a week.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll get that number for you, because I don't know...
And I guess I was just trying to find out, where I'm going with that is, if we're trying to offer a, a service at a nominal cost for low income, to bring in their kids where they cannot afford, like Magic Place, or all of them who are charging the higher costs.
Yeah, yeah, and, and you know, and we would be facing that question, I think, even if we were able to serve this all in-house, because there is, again, there is about a four hundred thousand dollar cost to actually deliver this service, whether it's by us or by someone else. And we would just face, you know, generally, we only try to recover fairly low percentages of our youth-based recreation programs, but I'll, I'll find that out to what the charges are for.
Okay, I'd just be curious to see what that is.
Yeah. All right, thank you all, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, are we on? I didn't recommend it, but.
Yeah, I just recommended.
Okay. We still, briefings, okay.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, I'll be brief. With the, since Mr. Cowell has covered a lot of the comments obviously made by the current year's financials anyway. I believe we have.
Once again, I guess I will start with saying revenue performance continues to be good, especially given the uncertainty and volatility of the national and global economies that we're in. And I think Mr. Cowell mentioned a lot of the items that I was going to point out in the current year as he moved forward in talking about the projections for the next year. As you see on the screen and in your handouts, you'll have the summary of our general fund budget of three hundred and thirty million dollars thereabouts. And as you'll see, they're going pretty good at this point. We still, looking at overall projections for the end of the year, just without going into a lot of detail, is we're still looking probably in the two or three percent range of surplus based on the current projections, which is pretty good. It makes some budget projectors a little weary, a little nervous, but it's a good number to aim at, I believe, for year-end surpluses from doing this. To point out a couple of these, you'll see that the real estate numbers are still looking pretty good. If you go all the way to the right, you'll see the seventy-five percent target of the number of months we've been through the year. You'll see, going down the list, the personal property tax shows ten percent. It's not due till May thirty-first, so these are still working off projection numbers and numbers that the Commissioner has provided, the Budget Office, to work on the projections. Mostly based on values, still seems to be doing very well. Our penalties and interest, you'll see at ninety-five percent of budget to date. I think catching up on some of the difficulties people are having paying their bills during the pandemic, showing a little more in our penalties and interest areas, which does show they're catching up, which is good. Into the other local taxes, as Mr. Cowell mentioned, sales tax is still performing wonderfully, very strong. We're expecting potentially a two and a half million dollar revenues and above a budget this year as we go through. That helps with our next year's budget. Looking down, the one that right now that we're really, the most interested in today is the business and occupational license. March first was the filing date on that. We think that one's going to end up right on budget or so. We'd like to be incorrect in that the year was much better for those businesses that year, but we're playing a conservative slant on this one right now. The two that I'd like to point out, and Bob mentioned those as well, the transient occupancy tax down a little lower on the sheet and the prepared foods and beverage tax. Those are showing probably between the two will be more than a million dollars above budget. That primarily reflects a more conservative approach to recovery after the pandemic. I'd like to say they are, as Bob mentioned, not fully recovered, but they are performing better than we had anticipated early last year. So that's good news, we believe. And then on down the list, when you get to the boxes near the bottom that are more summarized, you see the permits, fees, and license and such. I do want to point again to the revenue and use of money in property. That is probably going to be close to two million dollars above budget. Got a lot of money, paying good interest rates. That's the good side of the inflation side, if there is a good side of the inflation side. And then going down, charges for services, running a little behind, but we believe those will make budget by the end of year. So other than that, I'll leave it for any questions you may have about the revenues. Mr. Cowell did mention too, the PCI Revenue Collection System Implementation. I believe they're coming into the home stretch of getting some of that information. Finally, all the little cleanup for a major implementation like that. So we're looking good with that and we're feeling good about the revenues that are reported to you, at least in the right column. With that, any questions? Thank you very much, and I hope to have less to say on the expenditure side as we go forward. Just looking, I know this is very summarized, it's a very complicated thing to look at all the things that are going on. But really, I'll tell you once again, we're not overly concerned about any of our expenditure areas this year. If you look, target at about seventy-five percent, we are running right at that or lower with most of the areas. The only couple of areas that I'd point out in public safety, that's already at about a percent above. I think we all know about fire and police overtime. And then the police is also up their temporary wages due to some of their staffing issues. And the park recreation and cultural, you see that right at seventy-five percent again. I think that best explanation I could use around is the same one Bob used in some of the outsourcing. We're having to do that. I think in the next year, we'll find that balance and shift appropriately. Not that we're inappropriate today, but I think the pandemic and the staffing issues have really caused some problems around there, and we'll get our hands on that. And then finally, the judicial administration, they're still paid a lot of upfront costs and they're slowly coming to our target each month. So with that, are there any questions, anyone has?
I just have a comment, and it's more toward for the Treasurer. Since the, even when we stopped receiving the financial report on the agenda, she was always sending out the report for the schools. And I wanted to comment on that, that I like that. A part of it, so we understand what the schools' balances are running as well, along with what the financial forecast is going forward each month for the city. It just brings in what, it just balances what the schools are getting from us as well as what we have in also on hand in local cash.
Yes, ma'am.
So I want to just comment on that to her and thank her for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And by miracle of texts, just say, a hundred and fifty dollars per month is the charge for the after-school. For those that meet a poverty standard, there's a fifty percent reduction in that. So I think, Councilmember, you mentioned seventy-five dollars, it's probably how the seventy-five dollar number came into play.
Right, right, okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have one more briefing that we have to get through, because if we don't, we don't have a HUD budget that has to come through, so.
I'll truly be brief. I have a much smaller budget to deal with here. I'll crack this up here. And, okay, so we go on the program year, so PY twenty-twenty-three. Just going to hit some highlights. I am not going to go through all the content that is in your presentation. A lot of that says backup for you and for your reference. So what we've got right now, the figure up here, five point seven million reflects rollover money. We're actually getting two point six million and some change, new money in from the federal government. And that's not very too much. And so the higher figure here reflects some rollover money from previous years and with the Home ARC grant that we recently adopted a plan for and had that approved. So one remarkable thing that Keith Holland provided is looking, we do count for all the leveraging that our relatively small amount of community development funds provides. And so our five point seven million is projected to leverage twenty-seven point six million, which is pretty impressive, through a variety of different sources. Tax credits, development tax credits, matching funds, other grants, and other nonprofits in town, even down to the volunteer hours that Habitat for Humanity provides, and sweat equity. So here's the history from twenty-fourteen through the present. If you look at this, it looks like there's a trend upward. There really isn't, because if you go back to nineteen ninety-one, and you'll remember, the figure that we're getting this year and the coming year is two point six million dollars. So I won't make you guess, but in nineteen ninety-one, we got two point six million dollars. So that translates into about one point two in those dollars. So our HUD budget has been more than, they cut in half effectively. So, but, you know, compared to recent years, we've got a slight decrease. Most of that came from CDBG, right? Yeah, CDBG, which is the kind of unrestricted, the most flexible source of funds we have. So going through the annual plan process, we are already into that. We start each year in November with a kickoff, kind of telling people about the availability of funds and also helping them go through the process of applying. They have through January to make their applications and we start the process of reviewing and ranking those. We are in the comment period, we advertise that, and that started on April twenty-sixth, and that runs through May fifth. And then we will actually have a public, well, that's what we're doing now, April seventeenth today. And then we'll have today notifications of funding or going out to the agencies who apply. We wanted to wait until we were actually able to do this presentation. There will be a public hearing that happens at the same time as your regular, the general fund budget. And we hope approval on May eighth and then submit to HUD on the fifteenth. So most of our HUD funds are used for housing development, the vast majority. And those are embodied in two programs called CDBG and Home Funds. Some is developing new houses, some is rehabbing existing homes and doing repairs. And then also developing new affordable rental housing. We've got this, well, called kicker in there that we've been working through over the past few months with the Home ARC funds that will provide housing for very low-income individuals, which we really need. So we're working on implementation of that now that that plan has been approved by HUD. Incidentally, we submitted that plan shortly after you approved it last month and, was it earlier? Yeah, and like a day later, they approved it. That speaks to the, it was in a template format that was easy, it was not easy for us, mere mortals, to comprehend easily, but HUD people just loved it and they put their stamp of approval on it almost immediately. So the outcomes we're looking to get, eight new owner-occupied homes, mostly done by Habitat for Humanity, forty-six new workforce housing units, limited home repair. That's going to vary depending on the number and, you know, that's what comes at us in terms of applications. So we really don't know the number of projects we'll have there. Well, some of the houses we're seeing in the Belmont Fallon target area are very expensive and kind of exceeding some of the scope that we have to deal with, ability to deal with in terms of lead abatement. So we're putting some funds in to supplement those. And then residential facade improvements in Belmont Fallon, new rental units and a restored historic structure, that's restoration housing doing that, right? And then we've got a down payment assistance program that we're going to continue with a green lining approach, which is the opposite of red lining. And we're making those down payment assistance program available in areas that were formerly redlined, traditionally redlined. And then obviously rental housing for very low-income households. Neighborhood development, this is all non-housing stuff that we do in terms of community development. This is street scape improvements, bus shelters, code enforcement. We're able to do concentrated code enforcement in our core neighborhoods and rental inspections in our core neighborhoods and enhance that. So, and we're also incidentally doing a lot of curb outfitting basically the entire neighborhood with ADA curb access improvements at the corners. Public services, these are services to individuals, mental health, dental services, homelessness prevention, access to medical equipment. We still have some CDBGCV, which is coronavirus funds that they provided. We will spend those down in this year, well ahead of our deadline. They did have a fuse on them, if you will. Homelessness services, one hundred forty-eight thousand. ESG or emergency shelter grant entitlement funds. These cover prevention, our rapid rehousing programs, some shelter operations, case management, and most importantly, our homeless management information system that helps us track and understand the severity of the problems that we have out there and helps us get people to the help that they need. And planning administration, about seven hundred thirty-three thousand is needed to fund staff and cover all the expenses that we have to manage all these grant funds and with their staff and make sure all the stuff that goes on behind, because each one of these projects has a contract that goes along with it and it needs legal review and sometimes purchasing is involved. And so there are very meticulous standards for maintaining and continuing that we, continuing to monitor these different programs to make sure the money's spent and reported to HUD. So with that, I'll wrap up. I want to thank the HUD Community Resources Office. They do great work throughout the year, appreciate all their, again, a lot of their effort over the past year has been working on that Home ARC plan that you considered earlier. And so they did a great job on that. And then, of course, all the nonprofits out there that really do the boots-on-the-ground work with building houses, with renovating houses and providing services to this community. So with that, I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Brett.
Everybody's tired. All right, thank you.
That concludes the briefing, yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, we're receiving and filing. These are items that are recommended for action. Automated amendment of the City Code with regards to persons, with regards to parking for persons with disabilities. There's an ordinance.
An ordinance?
Madam Clerk, could you read the title of the paragraph?
An ordinance amending and reordaining section twenty dash seventy-six, parking spaces reserved for persons with disabilities. Section twenty dash one fifteen point five, parking beyond legal parking time prohibited. Section twenty dash one fifteen point thirteen, four-hours parking exemption, free parking exemption. And section twenty dash one fifteen point eighteen, failure to initiate meter. Division one generally, Article four, stopping, standing, and parking. Chapter twenty, motor vehicles and traffic of the Code of the City of Roanoke, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council?
And Mayor, just the only thing I'll do is highlight, the effective date of this will become July if approved. So that gives time for the parking folks to get everything they need in order. I want to again thank Mark, he's been diligently sitting back there and is the one that worked with us on this idea and concept. And certainly Brian Mann with the parking operations that helped us kind of go through this. And of course, the City Attorney's Office that crafted this. So we're happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, guys, and if you all got anything you want to say, that's fine. Get any comments? Okay. Mark's coming up with comments.
We'll keep this very brief. First of all, I'd like to thank all of City Council for their interest and focus on this issue. I'd particularly like to thank Bob Cowell for listening to me and seeing the broad picture of how this will affect all of our adaptive citizens. I think it puts our wonderful city out in front of so many municipalities. And my next step is to take it to the legislature. Thank you all very much, I'm proud of my city.
Thank you.
Let's go.
All right, item B, oh, Lev's got a vote on it.
Yes, I'll call the roll.
Okay.
Mr. Pretty.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Hi.
Ms. White Boyd.
Hi.
Mr. Vaulison.
Hi.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Hi.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item B is an acquisition of real property, right, for stormwater drainage improvement project, for FY twenty-three curb and gutter project. There's an ordinance. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the title of the paragraph?
Yes, an ordinance providing for the acquisition of real property rights needed by the city in connection with the stormwater drainage improvement project, FY twenty-three curb and gutter project. Authorizing city staff to acquire such property rights by negotiation for the city. Authorizing the city manager to execute appropriate acquisition documents and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you, any discussion by members of council? All right, Eric Nunn, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes, thank you. We're now down to comments by city manager, I'll call it on.
I dare not, sir. Thank you.
All right, item two A is the city attorney, the adoption of an ordinance granting and extending the deadline for payment of real estate taxes through April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and waiving the penalty and interest on the city code section thirty-two dash eighteen. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance granting and extending the deadline for payment of the second installment of real estate taxes for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year without penalty and interest through April fourteen, twenty twenty-three pursuant to section thirty-two dash nineteen, city code, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. I do want to recognize the treasurer here, his ever power is here to be here. And everyone, thank you for initiating this. I think it, I'm hoping a lot of citizens heard this, that we're not, they're not going to be penalized for some glitches in the program. All right, any other comments from members of council?
Uh, Mayor, I do have a question. There was a measure on the dais and I just want to know, was there a difference? Why there was, I'm trying to find the difference in the measures. And if there is something, then it needs to be a revised ordinance adopted versus the ordinance that was accompanied with the agenda.
There's caps my moon, there's a square footage error in the second line of the ordinance that was included in the packet. The ordinance on the table corrects that and that's reflected in the, in the tax year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three.
Then, then we have adopted a revised ordinance versus the ordinance, okay.
All right, so we need to, to have a motion to adopt that, that was revised.
Just for the revised.
Uh, yes, yes, Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the revised ordinance.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, we ready to?
Yeah, I was going to say.
I think we were going to allow the treasurer to come, since she's been so patient. I would like to hear her speak on this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I just want to explain what happened so you've got a better understanding of this. So, actually, on the deadline, May fifth, the online payment system went down and people just couldn't get in to pay. And so, we had to quickly make this decision so that we could get into the new PCI system and not have it the next day charge penalties. Any of those penalties, had we not done that, would have been a manual process. And honestly, we don't have staff to handle that. So, I appreciate you working with us. I have been working with this vendor to let them know that, you know, they've got to do a better job and get these little kinks ironed out. I will tell you that the vice president of the company, I've talked to her and she said, what do you need? And I said, I need you to come to Roanoke. She is coming to Roanoke. So, she's going to be here twice in May to just be here to see and hear what our taxpayers are having issues with. I would tell each of you, if you have not gone out there and set up what we call your watch list, go out there and do that. We're willing to help you, so if you get, have any struggles, please call me. You can call me on my cell phone, I'll come to, I'll come to you and help you. But, you know, we, we see some great things with PCI, with the system side. And, and as you've heard, the Mr. Brent over here, Robertson, talk about, you know, our revenue's looking good. We have been able to do a lot more in collections, especially on our delinquent side. So, I think that system is really helping us out with that. So, you know, as we work through these kinks, we just ask our taxpayers, please be patient with us, call the office. We're willing to help you get, get through this. But we're, we're praying that this does not happen with personal property. Those bills did go out this weekend and you might have seen the lines downstairs today. So, people are coming in early and hopefully that this will all iron out. But I'm here, just call me if you need me.
I just want to say thank you so much because I know you are a force to be reckoned with. Mr. Harmon bragged about you and, and how far along we are now. And we, we had a brief report in our audit meeting, it was all good things. And we know that you had to push some buttons and thank you for doing that, moving us forward.
You're very welcome. You know, I noticed this week I got a lot of texts from LinkedIn. Thursday, I just completed my forty-second year with the city of Roanoke. So, some people have said, are you, are you crazy? I'm like, no, you know, I've been very blessed to work here at the city of Roanoke and work with, you know, many, many council members. I think Mr. Cowell is my sixth city manager. And I'm blessed to say, you know, that I've been, I've always been happy to work here. And I look forward to, you know, working here a few more years.
Well, congratulations on forty-two years, I think that was over.
Thank you.
That's a long time.
All right, Madam Clerk, if there's no more discussion, ready to go?
Okay. Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes, thank you. All right, our next item is, item eight-one is report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriations of funds for various educational programs and reporter of the city manager recommending that council concur in the request. Donald Colwell is the director of accounting is the spokesperson. Does the budget ordinance?
Move the budget ordinance, second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth, federal and private grant for various educational programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, thank you, any discussion? Eric Nunn, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. All right, item two is report of certain authorities, boards, committees and commissioners in which city council serves as liaison appointees. I'm going to ask city council if there are any comments, but I know there's not any, so. Anybody on the boards or commissioners, any comments?
I can give a quick update from our last meeting.
All right.
And I'll just keep this very brief. Councilwoman Moon Reynolds asked about the use of the Greyhound building. And I did ask Kevin Price to send an email out clarifying the details about that. And you all have received that now alongside the GRTC board. But I just wanted to say that effective Monday, April third, Greyhound buses will have access to their permanent parking arrangement with passengers being able to board and alight on, at the Third Street Station. A map indicating the current service design was provided to Greyhound for reference and that map is attached in the email. Once all construction activities are completed, Greyhound will, will be providing onsite services to Third Street Station. So, the, they'll be in their slip and, and then Valley Metro will be staffing the passenger waiting area, not only for Greyhound, but for Smartway commuter service. The second thing that's likely to be offered is a Valley Metro Enhanced Customer Service Center. So, some of the things that you have to go to the main administrative building now, you'll be able to access those at Third Street Station. And those include some ticket sales, passenger ID service, star service intake center. And then also looking at the option of a private rental space for light snacks and coffee in that space. So, that's just an update on where the use of that space is right now.
May I ask just one question? Thank you for that, Joe, I appreciate it. You mentioned, you know, April, effective Monday, April the third, for the buses to have access to the permanent parking. I don't know, do you know what time the buses will normally run to come in? Is it doing regular business hours that it arrives and not after hours?
It, it does. I think there's one, early in the morning, I don't remember the exact times, but I'm thinking there's one early morning, seven-ish, noon, and then late afternoon, three or four. But they coordinate it with the other buses coming in.
Okay, because I was just wondering, because one of the things I read in the paper was dropped, being dropped over at the Virginia Transportation Museum, there was no bathroom access. So, that's why I was asking.
Right, so they have.
So, if they're off the bus, they, they have somewhere to go.
Yeah, and they have full access, and they have all along.
Right.
Had full access to the transit center bathrooms, but that will be easier now as the bus is pulling into the slip there.
Okay. Will they have somebody there on a regular basis on Greyhound side?
Greyhound will not.
They will not?
So, Valley Metro will be staffing.
But, but, but they will be able to do ticketing and?
No, we, all of the ticketing is done through Greyhound.
Oh, okay, I was just wondering if it's not.
Originally, they were talking about a kiosk and they're still, Greyhound is still trying to decide whether that kiosk is going to be external to the building or internal.
Oh, okay, I was just wondering, so you don't, so for older people or some of the people who are not that savvy?
But, but inside, there, there are, there is technology so that there will be a video screen and information about the Greyhound, arrival times will be posted there.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the ticketing process, that's all.
Yeah.
Lastly, and I'm sorry, will there be any kind of signage that lets them know that they can go in, waited for the Greyhound buses?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm good, thank you for that.
All right, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, what do we have? Are we ready to go with the school board?
Well, do you want to have motions and miscellaneous, miscellaneous business? That's down number eleven.
I don't think they are, but I'm going to move that. Item number eleven, motions and miscellaneous business inquire the comments by the mayor and members of council. I don't think we have any dissent.
Just yours truly.
Me too.
I just wanted to just follow up with the manager. I had sent him an email this morning about the, and Mayor, I think you were there to welcome the Roan, I think it was the library. There was a visit from the Library of Virginia Board that came to Roanoke to visit with us, to meet with the Roanoke Public Libraries. And the board worked, was going to work to determine the scope of the library's collection, establish, establishes policy concerning what books are kept, housed or exhibited by the state library. The thing that I wanted to bring up was I would like if we couldn't, Bob, perhaps maybe next month, the librarian could come and just do a summary of what, what transpired from that. I'm just interested in what took place in the discussions.
Yeah, they actually had their, their board meeting here, which they do once a year offsite. And so, this was where they were doing it this year, the State Library Board as well. And I was there for about the first hour of the meeting, but sure, I will have Sheila's.
Okay, thank you.
Got a chance to speak with members of the city?
Mm-hmm.
All right, vacancies on certain authorities, boards and commissioners, point about council, we have none. And so, Madam Clerk, we're ready?
We're ready. For school board interviews.
School board interviews, and they're here.
Yes, you can.
All right, well, I'm going to turn this over to our personnel chair. And, and I'm going to have to ask one of the school board members to take a seat outside, I think is, I'll let you do that, Beth, so.
Well, that would be, Ms. Saunders, thank you for your patience and for waiting. And we will be with you very shortly, we apologize. Ms. Jameson, we are so sorry, we certainly apologize for your wait. We had no idea that it was going to take this long. I will just do a little housekeeping with my colleagues here on the dais because we didn't get a chance to go into closed session. We normally would pick our question because we all have favorite things we want to talk about. However, that did not occur, so we are just going to start with Ms. Sanchez Jones. Well, actually, yeah, number one, and come on down the dais, that's the easiest thing to do. And first, I just want to say thank you for your interest in Roanoke City School Board. Thank you for your service that you've already rendered and has done such a beautiful job. And we won't prolong this any longer, you've been waiting long enough. So, I will let Ms. Sanchez Jones start with her first question.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was ready to start from the bottom up. Thank you for coming. My question is, what are the different roles and responsibilities of the school board and the superintendent?
What are the responsibilities and roles?
Roles.
So, our responsibilities and roles overlap in terms of shared governance, but differentiate in terms of governance versus operations. So, our role on the school board, of course, is to ensure that we are overseeing, governing the policies and procedures of the board, ensuring that budgetary processes are ensued to meet our strategic goals and to that, visions, to set the strategy and approve the strategy of the school system, to ensure those are met. And then in collaboration with our superintendent, to ensure that, that we have sound and clear processes and procedures to meet those strategies with accountability standards and across time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
How will you build and sustain relationships with other school board members and the superintendent?
Yeah, so we are, first, I would say thank you for selecting such a wonderful set of colleagues. So, that part makes it a little easier. So, one of the ways that we do that is particularly around points of business are our two by twos that we have when we're having big meetings so that we can actually find spaces to hear. As you all probably know, finding places to hear one another's thoughts on issues that matter are challenging. So, we do a lot of phone calling, we do one-on-one emails, we do these two by twos with the superintendent. Certainly, we are invited into meeting with the superintendent and asked to call and meet with her on a regular basis as soon as we have questions. We also reach directly out to one another as we're trying to think through processes and procedures. So, that's how we build relationships. We also like to eat together, I will say that, food is a big thing.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Dr. Jameson, welcome. You've been at this for a little while.
A little while.
So, this question really.
I was not gray the first time I did this.
Builds on your experience. Tell us a little bit about what you've learned through your involvement with public schools that helped you to be an effective member of the school board and what yet you need to learn.
Yeah, that's a great question. It's funny, I was thinking about that on the way over today. One of the things that I have learned is that the thing that you think you're going to bring to a body. So, I recall saying to, I'm trying to remember, maybe it was only you, Mayor Lee, and maybe you were here, Ms. White Boyd, when I started, was, well, I think at the time I was the only educator on the board, even though it was at higher ed, and that I thought I had a certain set of talents that might be useful to fill a hole. What I have learned, I would say, is that, yes, you use the talents you think you're going to use, but never in the way you anticipated that you would use them. I did not expect, the, the stretch and the growth and the ongoing learning of this position is one of its greatest challenges, but also one of its greatest opportunities. It is often, this is, I have heard it said by many of my colleagues, I certainly would echo it. This is probably the hardest and most important thing I may ever do in my life. So, what do I expect to learn? I think what I've learned is that I can't even anticipate what it is that's going to stretch and grow me next, but I know it's coming. We have a lot of important challenges and the kids need us all, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Jameson, and let me thank you for your leadership as chairman of the school board. And, and I've had the privilege of working with you for the last few years, a couple of years, or year anyway. But thank you for your service. My question is one that I'm sure you've, you're familiar with. It's what do you see as a major challenge? It's what do you see as a major challenge in Roanoke City Public Schools? And if you were appointed as a member of the school board, what would you do to address this challenge?
Yeah, I, I would say that I see about, perhaps, three primarily right now. I mean, there are many opportunities and challenges ahead of us, but I would say certainly continuing to deal with learning loss across our many diverse populations. It looks differently for our different subgroups of students and finding and continuing to put the right resources in the right places that make the right difference, to, to continue to come out of, and that learning loss is also social, emotional. It is, of course, an academic gap, but continuing to find those challenges, I think that's facing us. I know it's facing us in the city, it's facing all schools across the nation. So that's gonna be a legacy that's gonna stay with us for, honestly, the generation. I think another pocket, of course, that we're facing is, is growth. I mean, in terms of an immediate challenge, where we are growing is not necessarily where we have space in our schools. And so where we are looking, and this is a wonderful opportunity, but I think figuring out the feasibility and where and how we grow physically, and as I got to listen to a lot of your budget with anticipated tightening budgetary challenges, and doing that equitably across our student is probably the second challenge in the short run. And then thirdly, a personal challenge, and something that I would probably like to do is, is continuing, as I said, I, I feel like you all have done a wonderful job through my colleagues of selecting people to work with, but building bench strength in these positions. It's not necessarily easy or clear to know how to move your way into these positions if it's new to you. And so perhaps finding new ways to partner with you all and other organizations to, you know, if, if appointed into my last term, it seems like a good opportunity to find ways to help develop those kinds of future leaders. Because we have, we have a young board. It doesn't necessarily seem like that, but COVID also slowed down a lot of what have norm, would have been normal professional development for all of us. So, you know, so building that institutional knowledge and helping cultivate the next round, I think is the thing that I'm, I'm thinking about now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
So I have the next question, Dr. Jameson. What does equity and diversity mean to you? And why is this important for our school division?
Oh, it's critically important to me personally and to our school division. In terms of, in terms of, if I, if you're asking why is it important to me, it is because I see this as the cornerstone of our future. I mean, being able to figure out how to reach each and every one of the talents embedded in the people across our city, which we all love so well, and finding them and nurturing them and making sure they're not marginalized, and making sure that they have voice and agentic action and the opportunities. I think that's part of what I'm thinking about when I think about developing bench strength for the future of leadership for the school system. I, I see it as the key to tapping the strength that is this city. So, yeah, I think the importance of equity inclusion everywhere you look, right? I mean, the challenge, we all live in a box. The challenge is recognizing when you've hit your head on the box and realize, okay, 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 that's something else I need to work on, and what do I need to do, and how do I continue to grow in those directions? In terms of our school system, I love the opportunity to go other places and talk to other members and ex- No, do you understand we have 60-plus languages spoken in our schools? Do you understand that we have the richness of human experiences right here in our city schools? Do you understand that the tap and to reach that and grab that is the calling and the importance in whatever wealth and richness of diversity we bring to the table? To the extent that I can be a servant in helping that blossom, that's one of my passions. It's what I do, what I hope to keep in mind when I work with the school board, but also what I bring to Virginia Tech. It is, it is core, as I grow my gray hair, to who I hope to be. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Jameson. Please describe a situation when you experienced conflict and how you worked to resolve or transform it.
Well, let's think about closing schools during a pandemic. That, that, that was probably a place, and as I said, wonderful colleagues, we did not see, much like to this day on most of our challenges, we did not see eye to eye on how and when and where. We all wanted the same thing for our students. And so to, to the second half of your question of how did we, I helped navigate that, because things were tense, I lived on Pepsid for a year. It was hard, but we, I would say that the thing that I tried to do was have conversations with every single individual. I tried to continue to remind myself, even when, because we were all stressed out. I mean, it was, it was big. But I tried to remind myself what we, we all wanted the same thing. And we don't, not every school board in this country has that fortunate circumstance. Not every school board wants the same thing. And to a person, everybody on this board that you all have cultivated wants what's best for children. So keeping our eye on that conversation and not shying away from the hard conversations and trying to remember the humanness of the human connection, I think, Mr. Pretty asked the question about how do we build relationships? There was a huge temptation for us to tear the relationships apart, and I am proud of us that we did not. But it was a lot of work, so. I would, I would say that's the one that comes right to mind.
Yeah, it's more of a softball question now, since you've got a COVID.
It really, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Getting ready to start on a, on another three years, hopefully, after six, and you want some more of it. Well, my question for you is, what role in relationship, and being experienced in this for six years, this should not be a difficult one for you, I hope. What role in relationship should a trustee develop and maintain with city council?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, as each and every one of you know, this relationship is critical. Our buddy system and our ongoing conversations with one another, I think, at its root, it's hopefully as open and transparent. There are probably times where that's working better than others, as busy as everyone in this room is. But I think that relationship with council is key, among the many relationships we build. If for nothing else, I view my job in that relationship as to make sure that you're not surprised by things that you may or may not otherwise know, right? And I know that you all have done us the same courtesy. You know, to the extent that we can open conversations, sometimes hard ones, sometimes contentious ones, but to the extent that we continue to find both structured and unstructured ways to have open communication about the issues that impact both our bodies as, as, as entities in the city, I think that's crucially important. So I think that's probably how I would describe that. It's a, it's an ongoing communication conduit. Sometimes it's a collaboration, sometimes it's a contestation, but hopefully productively and, and respectfully. At least, that's been my experience in six years, so I'm very happy about that.
Good answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moon.
And we have one last question, and I'm gonna let Ms. Sanchez-Jones ask that question.
Very good.
Go back to her.
Identify two essential objectives that you have to accomplish as a school board trustee.
So what are two crucial objectives I have?
To accomplish as a school board trustee.
I have to accomplish, not, I hope to accomplish. Very good. So I would say, I'm sorry, I've-
Oh, that's okay.
I'm also fighting all of the pollen, so everything is clogged. The, I would, I would say, one would be to invest in the development, I have, at six years in, except for Mr. Kathy, I'm the old hand now. So I, one of the big accomplishments that I've been working on for the past year and that I see my role, and honestly, the reason I stand before you again for the third time, is the investment of the professional development of my colleagues to pass the torch of leadership effectively, so the ongoing, so the ongoing stewardship of the school board remains constant and strong. So I would say that that's my first accomplishment, I would hope. I have wonderful colleagues. You know, it's just a matter of how do we accelerate the growth and development? And we talk about that amongst each other. I would say that the second, the second accomplishment I hope to have is to see this miraculous superintendent we have stay in this district and continue to execute the strategic plan that was built collaboratively and with, you know, the voice of, of you all, but also the public and us as we go forward. Because I do think at its heart is the equity and diversity and inclusion of this city through education, through the power of community. And I really hope, you know, three years from now, we'll be near deep to the end of that. So I really hope to see those accomplishments coming to fruition and on track. So I'd say that those are the two key things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jameson. We, you know, you will have, or anyone who is interested in public comment tonight at 7 o'clock. You can ask your friends, family, colleagues, anybody that you want to come speaking on your behalf this evening at 7 o'clock. We will convene at our regular council meeting on May 1st, and we will have a decision that afternoon in the 2:00 PM session. So you will know for sure who the candidates are. And thanks again for your service to, to our Roanoke City Public Schools, and thank you for that long wait. We have, I'm sorry, that was-
That's all right. My heart palpitations had time to calm down. I want to thank you all for your time and for your service as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please, please. She's waited long enough. Come on down. Ditto, right. Well, first, you know, I, I want to truly apologize for that long wait. Yeah, we, we just, we do much, much better.
Business must get done, so.
Yeah, we, we normally are a little bit more on schedule, so I apologize for that. I just want to let you know, before you get started, that you will have the opportunity for public comment. If anybody wants to come in this evening at 7 o'clock, they can have public comment. And it could be your friends, family, colleagues, or anyone, and that's at 7. And we're gonna start on, well, we started on that, and I'll go to Ms. Moon Reynolds. Let's switch it up some. Yeah, we please start with number one.
You don't get to keep your pressure.
Yeah, we normally, we are normally a little bit more organized and orchestrated. But we're gonna, we're gonna just be on the floor. Today, that's how it's been rolling today. So Ms. Moon Reynolds, you have the floor.
Thank you, Natasha, for wanting to seek reappointment for your second term, I believe. Yes. My question is, what are the different roles and responsibilities of the school board and the superintendent?
Well, thank you for your question, and they say time flies when you're having fun. So I'm kind of shocked that my year three of my first term is up. I have really learned that the difference and the nuances in the roles is that we are really here to, to set governance and policy. I mean, we try really hard not to dip below that line of governance, which sometimes we get a little ahead of ourselves, but we're here to not only, you know, supervise the superintendent, but support her. We really see ourselves as a team, and so we want to make sure that we give support as they deal with the day-to-day operations and that we provide that structure. So we provide that governance, the policy to, to govern by, so that we have a safe educational system, so we have the best education possible for our students. So I'm a very collaborative person. I still don't see myself in a, in the, in the role that I'm in, but I do love to collaborate with our superintendent, provide support to our administration team as well. So they're operational and we're governance, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Good answer.
Welcome, Ms. Saunders. See, how will you build and sustain relationships with other school board members and the superintendent?
Right, well, I'm a very relational person. I love, and I probably keep them laughing a little bit too much at times, but we like to, to keep our relationship intact by having one-on-one, you know, meetings, going out to coffee, having a lunch here and there. We also have two-by-two meetings with our superintendent on a regular basis. That way, we can have discussion and any type of deliberation we need to have on the decisions that are coming down. But that allows us to have an opportunity to build relationship also with my fellow council members. Again, it's not like we can get together as a group, which kind of hurts us at times, but again, we like to have those two-by-two conversations when we can. So, yeah, I mean, everything that we pride ourselves on is having a relationship with one another. We don't believe in group think, but we do like to understand where another person is coming from, and those relationships really help so I can understand. I mean, I agree all the time with the decisions that my colleagues make, but at least I have a better understanding based on our relationship that we do have intact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so my question is, what have you learned through your involvement with public schools that helped you be an effective member of the school board? And what would you do, and what do you need to learn?
Okay, what I have learned, the biggest lesson I've learned as being a school board member, is I truly believe I'm an advocate in every role I've served. But in this one, you know, as transparent as I like to be, I've learned you can't be as transparent as you want. You are transparent to a fault, right? And so what I've learned is honestly to listen more. That is the biggest thing I think I have listened, I have learned, is to, to listen more, to make myself accessible to those who are in our community, whether they have positive feedback or negative feedback. And again, I've already established being an advocate and being a voice for those, but I think the listening part and making sure that I understand what the issues are. Also, you know, being open to the entire Roanoke City at large, it's very easy to get siloed in our, in our division. Just being a community member of Roanoke City is easy to get siloed. So making sure that you're hearing from different constituents across Roanoke City has been a, a growth opportunity for me as well. So listening, making sure that I stay in contact with my, my principals, I listen to our students, which is why I took this role, I wanted to have more interface with our students. So that has been a great opportunity just to listen to them. In fact, even establishing a student, a student advisory role for students to serve alongside of us has been a big opportunity, so again, we can listen more. Something that I think that I can learn even more, let's see. In three years, you think you would learn a lot, and I have, but I do think there's really room to grow, and that's why I wanted to reapply for this position. But I think even just becoming even more of a steward over our, our finances and being able to advocate for the, the needs that our community has, I want to learn even more about what our students and, and teachers need from us to feel supported. And so every day, I think I'm doing that, but these next three years, if I'm given the opportunity, I can learn even more what our students and our teachers need to feel supported in our city.
Thank you. Pass it on to Mayor Lee.
Thank you, Natasha. Let me just say that I enjoyed your speech at Goodwill a little more weeks back. I think it was very motivating and moving, so I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
My question is, what does equity and diversity mean to you? And why is this important for our school division?
Yeah, so first, I like to say that diversity and equity pretty much means everything to me. And I've realized even when I try to take a step back for, from it, 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 it claims me. So all the positions I've had, serving in higher education, and now even in my current role, has some layer of diversity, equity, and inclusion. There hasn't been many job titles I've held that didn't have that in the title. I truly believe diversity is in everything we do and that it has multiple layers to it. So not just our racial diversity, which most people point to, but making sure that all people have a voice. Again, being an advocate, as corny as it might, might sound, I feel like diversity is inviting everybody to the dance, and equity is actually getting them on the dance floor to dance to the music of their choice, getting them involved. And so I truly, truly believe in equity. I believe that every student should not get the same thing, but get what they need to be successful. And so I've led in- And so I've led in that. Being a school board member, I'm really proud of some of the things we've been able to accomplish, including having more exponential opportunities for our students. Because that, again, goes to diversity and inclusion, making sure that there's equity, not just academically, but again, exponentially. What opportunities are our students getting so they can have an advantage in their communities here in Roanoke and other communities they choose to serve once they leave Roanoke City? We want to make sure that we set them up for success and that, again, they are seen. One thing that I love talking to young people about is that I want them to be seen. And part of that is recognizing what their differences are, not just our similarities, but really what their differences are, and making sure they feel proud of those differences also before they leave Roanoke City Public Schools. So diversity and equity is something I feel like I live by, something that I, that's just ingrained in me. And that goes from being an academic coach to working in student development. I want to make sure that every child I meet with knows that I see them for who they are, and I'm working to make sure we close the achievement gap and opportunity gap for them on what their individual needs are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Natasha.
Yes, thank you.
For your service. What do you see as a major challenge in Roanoke City Public Schools? And if you're reappointed as a member of the school board, what would you do to address this challenge?
I think one of the challenges I've seen since becoming a board member and one that continues to exist is just, there's so many opportunities for growth. But one I focus on is just, again, allowing our students to understand that we're here for them. I think that our RCPS administration and staff and teachers do a wonderful job, but we need a little bit more community input also. That's something that I saw when I was a child, and I think many of y'all could speak to that if you think about your childhood here in Roanoke City, where we had a lot more community engagement. And we're doing great at that, but I'd like to see more of it. I want our students to, once they leave the school for the day, understand that their neighbors care about them, that their community members care about them. And so I would like to see a lot more collaboration, even though we've grown in that area. We're doing great in that area, but I do think that we still have a lot of nonprofits that could, that we could benefit from, and they could benefit from our partnership also. So I'd like to see a lot more collaboration with community engagement for the benefit of our students. So that'd be one, one thing that I would like to see.
Thank you. I liked your metaphor about the dance floor. Write that one down.
Like the dance.
My question is, please describe a situation when you experienced conflict and how you worked to resolve or transform it.
Okay, conflict and transforming it. Well, I'll, I'll take being thrown into or elected to the school board during 2020, during COVID. That was a trying, trying first year as a school board member. I was really, for lack of better terminology, baptized by fire. And I think we were all in the right time, in the right seats at the right time, leading with compassion and being able to waver on both sides of an argument of what was going to be safe and best practice for our students and for our staff and for our administration. And so that was a huge conflict. And I think I dealt with that well by, one, putting what I thought was best to the back burner, you know, not pretending to be the expert in that or even leading with my feelings. I'm a very intuitive person. I lead with my feelings. And so that was a big challenge for me to make sure I put my feelings to the side and actually did the research and actually took time to talk to people, talk to individuals, and again, be that person who listened instead of, again, thinking I know what is best, especially because I, at the time, did work in higher education. It's, you know, easy to assume that one size fits all, that what we're doing in higher ed may be a good fit for Roanoke City Public Schools, but it's not. And so I think I dealt with that conflict well by taking a pause to listen, to gain insight. And even those that were my colleagues at the time that may have had polar opposite ideologies of how to move forward, I actually wanted to learn more and lean in more to that so I can make sure we were making the right decision moving forward. So I think to answer your question, it's listening, it's collaboration, and it's, you know, listening for difference in opinions so I can make sure I stand on the decision firmly that I made at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
My question is, what role in relationship should a trustee develop and maintain with city council?
Oh, yes. Well, I do have a new city council buddy. And so.
Can you pull up your mic? Excuse me, can you pull up your mic?
I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Do you want to, do you want to say the question again?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
What role in relationship should you, should a trustee develop and maintain with city council?
Absolutely. So I was mentioning, I have a new city council buddy now. But I do believe with each of you to be transparent. And I think that those I've been paired with to have conversation would agree with that, that I lead with transparency. I want to be transparent. I want to be able to exchange dialogue and be able to, again, collaborate. As a board member, again, I don't pretend to know it all. And so even listening to city council members and having conversations with city council members, I've been able to, again, have deeper thought, have deeper insight on things before making a decision on policy and governance and decisions that we have in place as a school board. And so, again, I just believe in relationship. You all have these seats. I know for some, it can be very intimidating to even school board members, right, and to the community. And so coming into this role three years ago now, one of the biggest things I wanted to do was make sure I made myself available to make relationships, to have conversation, to be open and transparent. And so I look forward to continuing to do that. And even though we're paired with a buddy, anybody who wants to have a conversation, I'm very open to do so. So, yeah, I think that's a relationship. And also just being a pillar of the community. I've had the opportunity to invite others out to speak and make relationship that way as well, to hear from our city council, again, to make sure our community is informed of the decisions that are making on you all's behalf as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And we're gonna, we got one more question. I want to let Mr. Ballson have that one.
Absolutely.
Okay. Identify two essential objectives that you hope to accomplish as a school board trustee.
Okay, essential objectives. One, we're already doing it, but we have an equity and action plan. And they probably got tired of me harping on that even three years ago, equity, equity, equity. But we, we have a very innovative superintendent who's been able to lead that charge. And an essential objective for me is to see that through and to continue to be a part of the equity task force and make sure that we continue to see everything we do through the lens of equity. That has been huge, from our capital improvement plan to our curriculum, to how we recruit, because it's no, you know, shock that we are a very urban, very diverse school system, and we are seeking that same representation in our teachers and administration as well. And that is something I've actually seen the needle move on in these last three years. And I want to continue to be a part of something huge, something greater than I am, right, to see that come to fruition. So one of the objectives, again, is just to continue to see that equity lends through everything that we are working on, even when it comes to having our curriculum the same, or call streamlining our curriculum. There's no reason why we should hear that one school is getting this type of service and another isn't. So one objective, again, is to close that opportunity gap. And that's just working and supporting with our, supporting the administration we have and the plans we have in place thus far. I think another opportunity or objective I would like to have as I continue to be in this role is to just be an influence and a good role model to our students. That is what actually brings me peace at night and allows me to be productive in this seat. It's not about me. It's not about the positionality. It's about being able to influence the students in a positive way. And so any chance I get to be of service to the students and talk to them and impart wisdom or coach one, mentor one, advise one, that is actually what brings me happiness at the end of the day. And so this, this platform allows me to do that. But even if I'm not given the opportunity to serve another three years, I will continue to serve in that capacity for our youth. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Saunders, I just wanted to tell you that we're going to confer on Monday, the May 1st.
Yes, ma'am.
And we will have a decision on the candidates that were selected that afternoon, like after the 2:00 PM session. But thank you so much for your service and your commitment to RCPS. Thank you for sitting there for an hour. And, and, and like I said earlier, you have the opportunity to invite friends, family, colleagues, or anyone that you want to have any public comment tonight at seven o'clock here just in a little bit.
I know. I hope y'all get to eat.
So you read on Monday that we live hungry.
That's my theory.
We live hungry. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. And I hope y'all enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The council will be in recess for a closed meeting and a brief meal before we start again. All right?